Good evening, everyone. The time is seven ten and this meeting is being recorded. Under the invitation, Father God, we just thank you. We are grateful to be able to say thank you for keeping us yet another day. And we thank you and we give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise for who you are. And we invite you tonight into this meeting when we ask that you lead in us into all truth and that your peace and your oneness will prevail. And Father, we just ask that you would just help us as we serve the people and as we do the business of the city and that we may serve successfully. And we ask that you bless our citizens of the city of Glen Arden. We ask that you bless the city employees, the elected officials, and everyone who is connected with us and with the city and do business with the city. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen and amen.
Amen.
Council Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Here.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
The Council President will be joining us shortly.
Thank you, Council Clerk.
You're welcome.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Council Vice President, if I may?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, are you, you weren't, you were not aware that the, um, the audit company not able to join us this evening?
No.
The presentation.
Okay.
They're listed right after the minutes. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Were there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some.
Some.
Okay, Ms. Jones, um, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Jones, and then Councilman Herring second. And it's a roll call, call to accept the agenda?
I'm sorry, Council President, uh, Council Vice President, I have, uh, something I'd like to add to the agenda.
Okay, then, yes.
And the topics of discussion, goal room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council Clerk.
Okay, council are voting to approve the agenda with the, uh, exception, with the removal of the audit report. Councilwoman Fareed.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes, with the goal room included.
Exactly, yes, I'm sorry, with the gold room included, yes. And Council Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
Both carries.
Thank you, um, with the minutes for March fourth work session, twenty twenty-four work session, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four public hearing, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four regular hearing, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four public hearing, motion to adopt the minutes.
I'm sorry, Council Vice President, not, uh, we're not gonna accept the minutes until, uh, the regular meeting.
Oh.
We're just gonna go, uh, review them and then if anybody has any questions, they'll ask next week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, so the legislation. The ordinance of the city of Glen Arden for the purpose of amending chapter one forty-two Streets and Sidewalks Audit to obstruction requirement. That's, um, sponsors. Derek Curtis.
Yeah, Council Vice President, Councilwoman Jones has her hand raised.
Um, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council, uh, Vice President. This ordinance, um, I'm, I'm thinking that this, uh, this document that was, uh, I'm, I'm thinking this document goes with it. The subject is right-of-way permitting proposal. Uh, it was from, uh, the city manager. I need to know from the city manager, is this a document, is this supposed to be attached to this ordinance? Not necessarily attached, but is it, uh, is it related to this ordinance?
It is.
Okay.
It is. It is a part of it in terms of the implementation and understanding uh, what staff will be doing in terms of the calculations of permit fees and maintenance fees, that kind of thing. And so, um, the, the ordinance itself is based on Prince George's County, uh, how they do their, uh, right-of-way permitting, uh, some of which is new to us and, uh, I don't know that we'll need uh, to pay, you know, fifty-five hundred dollars worth of advice, but certainly, um, it will give us, um, a place to start in terms of the approval of that in order to address two, uh, requests for curb cuts and utility connections.
Okay, and as a municipality, we don't necessarily have to adopt the county regulations, but it would be nice to see them. So when this meeting, uh, comes together, I would like to be advised of date and time so that I may attend.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Vice President.
Welcome, Councilwoman Jones. Anyone else have any, um, comment or questions concerning this? Or any?
Yes, Council President.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, this is a huge piece of documentation and it's a lot of reading and this, I mean, I'm not sure why we adopt the county standards when we don't have the person out to enforce these county standards. Um, I'm not gonna hear about engineering this and engineering that and fees for this, fees for that, and all of this other stuff. Inspection of streets and this, is this only for streets or is this for opening up curb cuts also?
Uh, streets and curb cuts. It's right-of-way permitting, which includes street cuts and, uh, curb cuts.
So, um, is there anything in here that says the city has the right to deny opening the right-of-way?
Um, it just governs how, uh, things would be processed, uh, in terms of, um, for example, if someone wanted to open up a street that we had just paved, uh, and put a moratorium on for five years, um, there is, um, you know, a permit fee um, on that that, uh, could be charged ten dollars, uh, you know, a linear foot uh, for the disturbance of the newly paved right-of-way. Uh, the language in the ordinance, um, provides for engineering fees to be charged with the assumption that the engineering fees would cover the review of uh, of a particular project, new construction in particular, uh, to advise on, um, that matter. Um, in, in terms of curb cuts, um, how to, how to look at it on, on saying no to a curb cut. Um, what's in here is, is basically the language that's permits, um, uh, permits a process, promotes the city to undertake a process to evaluate curb cuts.
Okay, 'cause I'm just saying that if we have this in place, then there's no place for us to say no. We don't want you, we're not gonna open up the curb.
Well, um, I, I think, um, in the past, the past history, uh, that, that the city has had on, I think, uh, as I believe cul-de-sacs on second, maybe, first and second streets. The history was that, that they were denied, uh, you know, curb cut. And I've been trying to find the background on that, um, through the previous city attorney to Ellen Ferguson and, uh, she couldn't help me a whole lot with the, the background in terms of documentation that she had on, on that, uh, particular denial that occurred, uh, for those, uh, possible additional houses on those streets at the cul-de-sac. So that's still a lot to research.
That was just based on charter that says that, you know, the city has a right, it, the city controls its right-of-way.
Yes.
So that, just saying that, we control it right-of-way, we can open it up to whoever we want to, we don't have to open it up to whoever wants to. But I'm thinking if you put a mechanism in place where it says, we will open it up if you do this, this, and this, is there a place where we can say, no, we don't, even if you do all of that, we're still not gonna open it up? Will we be in court because they follow the process and we'll be forced to open it up when we don't want to?
Um, I, I can ask for, you know, a legal uh, interpretation, legal opinion on that from Mr. Best. Um, and, uh, as I mentioned, try to get something from Sue Ellen Ferguson, who was the attorney at the time, that the, the other, uh, curb cuts for those streets were rejected. Uh, and have not, I mean, if, if there's anyone on the council that has any documentation from that, that time, uh, that would be helpful, uh, probably for staff as well as for Mr. Best.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, um, Council President is here and we're on the second, um, resolution.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Good evening, everyone. Uh, next up is a resolution to authorize a contract with TK Elevator Company for the manufacture of a elevator for installation at City Hall, subject to certain conditions. Are there any comments or questions by council members? Councilwoman Jones? You on mute?
Thank you, Council President. How are you? Thank you so much for this moment. Um, I noticed on, on one of the pages, it gave, um, for the elevator, it gave, uh, finish selections. Do we, are we, uh, will we, uh, the council have to make, um, selections for the finishes?
I believe so, I, but Ms.
The laminate, the metal, uh, painted metal.
Where, uh, Ms. Tanika Felder is on the line and she can answer that question. Ms. Felder?
Yes, I'm going to present all of the options for the council to be able to finalize the, the selections on.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, Council President? I believe Ms. Felder may have additional information that wasn't available, uh, prior to us putting the work session package together. I believe she has information with regard to the, uh, council chamber and the, uh, nutrition center. The, is that correct, Ms. Felder?
Well, I was just gonna give an, an update on that. Um, we, we are working on the, um, the working drawings for it based off of the presentation that we gave, um, last month so that we can get the final pricing um, together with that and all of the AV equipment that we're gonna be putting into the space.
There a timeline connected to?
Um, we should have, I, I know, I believe we should have the working drawings for the council chamber and nutrition center finished by, um, the end of this month. That will also have all the pricing together for you to be able to, um, see where everything is at with all of the proposed renovations.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, thank you, Council President. There was also, I made a request for the asbestos report. Uh, city manager Hobbit, was that report, uh, uh, done for Ms. Felder?
Uh, I don't believe it was requested. I'm not sure that I recall that. Uh, I'll have to figure out who, who would prepare that, uh, the asbestos. I'm not sure that, that would be our engineers or who, is there a specialist, Ms. Felder, that we would go to for that?
Yes, there's a specialist who deals with lead and asbestos testing. Um, if you want some recommendations, I can, I can offer some if you don't have any, uh, within the city.
I'm sorry, you offered, I think, Ms., uh, Ms. Hobbit, you offered at that time that she was gonna go to, uh, CPJI. But, uh, if Ms., uh, Felder has some recommendations, I would certainly, um, ask for her to submit those to the city to be considered. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Jones? Are there any other questions, comments, anything for Ms. Felder? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Felder.
Thank you.
Next up is a resolution to approve right-of-way permitting proposal, CPJ and Associates. Are there any questions or concerns, uh, related to this legislation? Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, what resolution was that again?
A resolution to approve right-of-way permitting proposal, CPJ and Associates.
Could you share that on the screen, please?
Just a second. Actually.
Council President, I believe I sent it as a separate, uh, when I realized that it hadn't connected. So, uh, it should be a second, a sev- a second email with that listed. If not, I can resend it.
But is, is, is not on the website for citizens to review? I don't see it on here. It can find, or if you have it, you can share it on the screen. All right, let me figure that out. Hold on. Um, how about as the council clerk is looking for it, we'll circle back to that one. Is that fine with everyone?
Thank you, Council President.
Okay. So we will move on to a resolution, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Ford E three fifty Starcraft bus from Apple Ford. Are there any questions from council members on this resolution?
I do have one question, Council President.
Councilwoman Jones?
For the administration, is the city bus still down? The last res- um, email that I received said that the city bus was inoperable. Is it still down?
I believe that it was up, uh, towards the end of last week as, uh, Mr., uh, Bazemore was here and and it was operational, so it's my recollection.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones? Are we ready, Council Clerk, or can we, should we move on? Do we need more time?
I need more time.
We'll save that one for last. Next up is a resolution to approve.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, I did have a question about the bus. Um, I guess looking at a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, have we actually did looked at the actual need of the bus? Well, I know it's, it's helping some people, but how many, how much are we actually pulling in on this bus? And how, I mean, do we need to extend hours? Some of the points I hear that the hours are too short for people to use the bus. So, you know, we're spending a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars and the bus stops running at what, one thirty or something like that? You know? I'm just looking at the, the, the cost effectiveness of having this, spending this kind of money on a bus when we're only doing a certain number of people, um, month. And we could be probably doing more people if the hours were adjusted. But maybe that's something we can look at, at the budget time.
Okay, you're talking about extending the hours of the, um, the driver?
Yeah. Because it's right now, not from my understanding, there's not many, not many people ride the bus. And ones that do, they're the regulars, but I know some people who say they can't because the hours are too short. You know, um, we're gonna be spending a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars on the bus. And if we're still getting the same demand as we did before, do we need a bus this size?
Hmm.
So I think that's something we need to look at.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Councilwoman Jones, is that a new hand?
Yes, it is, sir. Thank you. Um, the bus is, is a service that's provided to the citizens and also, it was also mentioned that the bus was gonna be used for the nutrition center when the seniors come, uh, bring them, uh, come back to the nutrition center once it's, um, re-renovated, that, uh, they were gonna use the bus to take seniors to, uh, farmers markets and, and, and probably in Laurel or and do different types of, uh, day trips, so, um, it, a hundred and twenty-three thousand for the bus. It also has two, uh, wheelchair seats in it. If you look at the diagrams, the, uh, that was presented, so that that is the reason supposedly for the bus. Now, uh, as Councilman Herring says, we can look at, uh, uh, the usage. If we don't wanna provide that service to the seniors any longer, then of course, uh, we can, uh, determine, uh, if we need a bus or not. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Are there any questions related to the, um, city bus? Okay. Move on to a resolution to approve the House of Thread winter newsletter expense. Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, that's a new hand, too. Um, I looked at that resolution. I think in the budget, they only allowed it for the twenty twenty-four budget. Sixty-five hundred dollars for the newsletter and this seems like this one winter newsletter is seven thousand dollars by itself and they say that they're getting the money from the, uh, budget line, uh, eighty-one-ten, which only has sixty-five hundred dollars in it. How are we going to, uh, finance this, uh, seven thousand dollars?
Mr. Curtis?
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council President.
Senator Habbert?
Yes. Um, the financing, we have one more, uh, newsletter left for the last quarter. Uh, and the, uh, treasurer and I will look at, uh, where the funds can be drawn from for a budget amendment. We do need to pay this bill.
All right, Councilwoman Jones, does I ask you a question?
Um, yeah, but they're already, I think in that budget line, eighty-one-ten, it's at eleven thousand, some, some odd thousand, eleven thousand, some odd dollars already, so. Uh, when I looked at the budget, you know? So, um, not only do they have to, unless this seven thousand dollars is included in the sixty-five hundred dollars that they've already spent, but, um, they're, they're already eleven, it's at eleven thousand dollars. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I have a question because this was from the winter newsletter. At what point did we know that the amount of the newsletter was going to be more than six thousand dollars, which is the city manager's limit?
Uh, only after the fact, uh, when we got the bill. Uh, we did not ask ahead of time what did adding the full pages for these items, uh, would cost. Um, we had in the past added the, um, intergenerational poverty fund in the newsletter. Uh, and it hadn't bumped it up so high. But I think adding in the Ucap applications, uh, kind of pushed it over the edge. Uh, and the lesson learned in terms of asking questions ahead of time in terms of what the cost might be and perhaps making a decision not to include anything other than city-related applications.
Yes, I, I think that would be prudent and almost basic expectation that we would understand what the costs are before committing the city to anything, um, regardless of what it is. So I hope that going forward, we are more judicious in how we are spending our money and making sure that we're evaluating what our, um, thresholds are before we are committing funds and going through the proper channels to make sure that adequate funding is available before committing going forward. Thank you.
Any Councilwoman Fareed, are any other questions?
Yes, uh, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Herring?
Yeah, I, I guess my issue is also is that we need to really get a hold on this newsletter because there's some sections in it, it's entirely too many pages. One section should not be six to seven pages in all. And that's the mayor's section. I think we need to, everybody need to have a certain page, uh, two pages at, at the most on what they're gonna speak about and that's it. Um, yeah, I mean, 'cause I would rather have those applications go out than have six pages of things that's happening outside the community. Um, I think we, and as, uh, Councilwoman Fareed said, we really need to look at this, um, from the standpoint of, of cost prior to, uh, publishing. And I think the only way we're gonna do that is to limit the number of pages. Everybody have a section and everybody got a certain number of pages that they can utilize and leave it at that. That's the only way we're gonna lock in the cost. That way we'll have any wiggle room for anything like this for these applications. Uh, 'cause I think these applications are very important. People need to get them to try to spend down this money, so, um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Any other comments from council? Okay. We're moving on to street and sidewalk repairs for wards three, two, and one. Council, any questions? On this particular resolution, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I still have an issue with, uh, Ward Three not being completed as, I mean, I understand that they put together this, uh, and what needs to be done first, um, uh, this, develop, develop this thing for what they feel needs to be done expeditiously. But, uh, Ward Three has been asking to have their, their streets repaved since before I was even on the council. So, and, and we've only done, uh, I think, uh, First Street, Second Street, Third Street, Fourth through Eleventh have not been done, have not have any, have not had any asphalt. And I don't understand why the, the, on Seventh Street, in the fourteen-hundred block of Seventh Street, there is a hole in, 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 in that, uh, street. And I don't understand why this engineering company did not see that, uh, in, in the, on Seventh Street, but still, um, and I think all, um, Cousins, Jeff and, and, um, Tyrol were never asphalted. And I, I see that they have them kind of mentioned on here, but, uh, I, I just think that the, the citizens in Ward Three, that portion of Ward Three have been asking to have their, uh, uh, streets repaved just like in Ward One and Ward Two, they've been repaved one or two times, uh, and Ward Three is still lingering. So I would request that, uh, uh, Ward Three be done in asphalt first and then, uh, then we do whatever they have considered is that needs to be, uh, done expeditiously. That's the only issue that I have, real issue that I have with this legislation that they're only gonna do a very small portion of Ward Three. If this, uh, I, I, I think this, uh, a, uh, addendum that was added from the city manager dated, uh, April nineteenth, and it shows Ward Three, I think it, you know, just is one or two issues that they, uh, that they show. Thank you, Council President.
Council? Comments or questions from council? Hearing none, we will move on. Uh, next is a resolution to authorize installation of new sidewalks on Glen Arden Parkway. Uh, Vice Pres- Vice President Ferguson?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to first add that, um, Councilman Maurice Harrison will be a co-sponsor in this, uh, resolution. And, um, this area is, um, the area between, uh, the directly across, uh, the street from directly across, uh, the street from the municipal center, um, employee parking lot. And also facing the handicap, um, door going into the goal room. And, uh, is directly across the street and the, um, rec center is behind it. And, um, there is no sidewalk there. And I've had some, I have some complaints for, um, from, um, citizens. And, um, that lives over Fulton, uh, over at the Glenon housing and one from, um, Johnson Avenue on, in Ward Two, and another one from Leslie. And basically, um, especially with, um, over in, uh, over Fulton Avenue area, who's saying that the children walk that, uh, there's no sidewalk there. There hasn't been a sidewalk there, so they walk that, uh, area to get, to cross the highway to go over to the, um, the store or the, the, uh, the carryout. So, um, I guess, um, city manager or either, um, Mr. Simpson, can you, uh, elaborate on your findings concerning the installation of this, uh, sidewalk?
Uh, Mr. Simpson, do you want to talk about the site visit and with NZI and with, uh, CPJA?
Uh, yes, uh, so we did a site visit, uh, with CPJA, uh, uh, as well as the PG County contract and NZI that has done the work within the city. Uh, and they have all stated that these are our streets and that, uh, we are able based upon their measurements and what they've taken a look at, uh, safely be able to place a sidewalk there for the price, price proposal noted there in NZI's contract with, which is consented, consistent with the unit, uh, pricing.
Vice President, does I ask you a question?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any comments or questions from the council?
Council President, may I?
Yes, uh.
Yeah, Councilwoman Gail?
Sure, thank you. Um, this is more so for council vice president and also Councilman Hairston. Hairston, I would like to know if it's possible for me to co-sponsor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um, so, um, have we, I think that's in the sidewalk in, there's no connectivity from along Seven oh four from Glenon Parkway down toward, uh, Horse and Dicky's. There's, there's no sidewalk there. I think it's, doesn't connect. I think it's like, is there sidewalk there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so it is a sidewalk from, on Seven oh four going down that way. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything while we're doing this.
Yeah, actually, you know, when you walk in, um, like on the side where the municipal center is, and they have like a little, uh, section where you, you walk, um,
Oh, right, yeah.
And then there's a walkway to get from, from across there to, to, um, to the other side. I don't know who, who, uh, put that in there, whether it was the state or whatever, but it's, um, it's just there. So from the corner, um, I guess McLean, McLean's going all the way, it would, um, the sidewalk would meet where that, that sidewalk starts to go, um, past the church and down to, um,
Now, will they, will the sidewalk go to the bus stop and they have a handicap access ramp at that curb? Will there be a curb cut for a handicap, handicap access ramp to get across the street? To get across McLean to go, you know, toward housing?
Uh, President, President Curtis?
Yes, Mr. Simpson?
Uh, uh, yes, I believe there is a, a ramp there, uh, Councilman Herring, um, and they will connect. We walked that area, NZI, uh, and confirmed that we would be connecting to those ramps, um, which go across McLean as well as another, if I'm not mistaken, uh, across Glenon Parkway.
Okay, and one other question, I think you, I think you need to, um, tighten up this resolution because it's really basic. You need to say, state the section of the code that allows us to circumvent the bidding process because that's not in here. I think it's Section eight twenty-one, I think it is, or something like that. That needs to be added in here just so we can just, so we can let them know why we're doing it because, um, again, it's like we're just taking, we're just doing a twenty-three thousand dollar bid without following any process. I mean, doing a twenty-three thousand dollar project without following, following any process. And only we had a language in it that shows why we're doing what we're doing without putting out, you know, the standard bid process of RFPs. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. See that that's the time. Thank you.
Uh, Council President?
Sir?
Um, so I had a question, uh, for Mr. Simpson. You did say that it's, were you sure that it's going to be wheelchair accessible? Because I know that I have a buddy around there that's in a wheelchair. He pretty much gets around the whole city, um, by his wheelchair. So I just wanted to see if that was, um, like verified, or you were saying that you were going to check that out and see?
Yes, it, it definitely will be, and I will, uh, make sure we are in compliance with all ADA, uh, uh, you know, laws and requirements. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Does this touch on also the, the, I take it that we have to get special permission for the crosswalk on Seven oh four crossing Glen Arden Parkway? We have to get special permission from the state to put something there?
Uh, it, I believe the answer would be yes, uh, President Curtis, if you're asking me, yes. Fairly paid highway.
Can we look into that, please? Because there are people who are crossing that busy highway all the time and especially during the, the morning and the evening times when school was letting out. That's a busy intersection. Um, and people are trying to just jet across the street, but I don't think there's a crosswalk there.
Sir, I'll, I'll look into it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, there, thank you, Council President. There is a crosswalk on one side. Well, not a crosswalk, but they have the, the, uh, automated thing where you press the button and then the, the light, um, comes on, the hand comes up and say, okay, you can cross on, on that one side where the, um, tobacco store is. But on the other side, I don't think that that's handicap accessible right there. Because, so we'll have to get that to be handicapped at that sidewalk right there at Seven oh four. And, uh, the sidewalk, I don't think that sidewalk is handicap accessible. So that, that will have to, uh, Mr. Simpson can, uh, reach, uh, check that again. But I don't think that one side is handicap accessible. Right there at Seven oh four where the sidewalk is. On, on that side. On the other side, I think it is handicap accessible. On the, on the side where the, um, tobacco store is, that, that one is. And they also have the, the, the crosswalk sign. But on the other side, uh, going towards, uh, Horse and Dicky, right there at Seven oh four and Glen Arden Parkway on the other side, it is, it is not handicap, I don't think, if I remember correctly.
And Mr. Simpson, we can wait. I know they're doing roadwork there, so maybe the intent is to put side, yeah, that crosswalk there.
Uh, they would have cut it out already.
Well, we'll still, yeah, we'll see.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Uh, Councilwoman Jones, what side are you talking about? The, the side of Ward One or Ward Two?
Um, if you're facing, if you're standing at City Hall facing the tobacco store on that side of the street, on the same side that the, the apartments are on, then there is, uh, it's like, uh, 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 handicap accessible there. And it's also, uh, the, you can press the button and then, you know, this traffic will stop and the, the hand will come up and tell you, okay, you can cross. Or it'll come up and say, okay, it's time for you to, you know, slow down. But it's, there's, there's not one on the other side, which is, uh, on the other, on the other side of the street, which is, if you're, if you're looking, if you're standing on, on the other side of the street, looking at the bus stop on the, on the Ward One side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's, that's where there's no handicap accessible and there's no, uh, light. So I'm sure, I'm, I'm thinking they expect you to cross, if you want to cross over Seven oh four, you have to cross over right there at the, uh, where they have the indicator for you to cross.
And so, but they are, they are some on, in Ward Two, right across from each other. So.
Yes.
Um, Councilman, uh, Pa- um, Pastrn, what you was asking was the one that was closer to the bus stop, would we going to cut one in that, on that side?
Yeah, they're going to cut one. They would have to.
That, that was one of my concerns because I, I also, um, had mentioned that there's, you know, wheelchairs, you know, they, they have to go in the street. And when you come in off of Seven oh four, making that right, it's kind of like a blind spot there when you turn the corner and they shouldn't have to be, uh, willing, you know, in the street. So, yeah, that was one of my concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager Haber?
Uh, yes, um, you know, it was a surprise that this came in, uh, at the cost that it did. Uh, the length there is, is, uh, I mean, it's a great price. Um, you know, this is one thing that we could, uh, amend the resolution to have it charged to the ARPA funds. Uh, Dean Stewart and Mr. Himmler and I are going to be meeting on Thursday to try to scope out uh, where to, uh, start spending some more of the, um, uh, uh, the ARPA funds, particularly on streets and sidewalks, uh, you know, the, the two eighty-four that we have, uh, we have a big chunk of ARPA money to spend. Uh, and the concern that Mr. Himmler shared with us is that so far we have not spent uh, a great deal of money, uh, on ARPA, now, you know, with, in, in terms of the four point two million. And so, um, we're going to be sitting down on Thursday to try to, uh, look at that and, and see what recommendations to make on street and sidewalk repairs. Uh, there's only, as you saw, there's only two hundred and eighty-four thousand on the urgent needs. And council asked, we go back to CPJA and ask them to, um, to take a look at, uh, urgent needs for wards one and two, and they did that and only added another hundred and two thousand dollars. Uh, so with, uh, the recommendation from Councilmember Jones of, of doing a milling and res servicing of, uh, the streets in, uh, Ward Three of, of, um, five, what is it, five through eleven, or seven through eleven, uh, that would help, uh, in terms of the tally. Um, and so, uh, I suggested to Mr. Himmler that he join us tonight in case he wanted to, uh, um, uh, talk about that. And if council's willing to wait for our recommendation after we meet on Thursday, uh, that'd be, you know, okay too. But I did want to let you know that, um, this, you know, we can add the twenty-three thousand and have it charged to, to ARPA, uh, funding, which would help. Uh, and we can put that language in this resolution, uh, if that's okay with everyone.
Vice President Ferguson and Councilman Hairston?
That's okay with me.
Okay.
It's okay, we'll need to.
All right, Councilwoman Gail?
Sure, quick question for the city manager. City manager Haber, you're meeting, you're meeting with Mr. Himmler on Thursday to discuss this. Um, do you have a time already set? Because I may want to join, if that's all right, to discuss other opportunities for ARPA?
Uh, sure, um, you know, um, uh, think, uh, let me just check the calendar. I think that, um,
Well, we can, or if, or if you want, city manager, in the interest of time, you could just send me, and, you know, via email?
Sure, so we're meeting at eleven on Thursday.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Yes. Any other questions regarding this resolution? Okay. Here now, we'll move on to a resolution to hire Kevin Best as special counsel to the city council for legal work assigned by the city council. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I am, um, wondering if the city has received, uh, any references from Mr. Best concerning any, the annexation prop, uh, projects that he's been involved in?
Uh, we have not, but we could certainly ask him. I do know that he has done annexation work that has put him in court at the highest levels of the Maryland court system, and he's won his annexation cases. Um, so, but certainly in terms of the number and the type of, you know, what municipalities it worked for, we'd be, we'd be happy to pull that information from him.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments related to, uh, this resolution? All right, we move on to the public hearing. Next up is a resolution authorizing a contract with Axon Enterprises to purchase twenty Taser seven certification bundles. What is open to questioning from council? Councilwoman Jones, so, do you have?
I guess we can get, uh, maybe, uh, the, the treasurer or someone to our city manager to explain what happened here. Because it has, this resolution has a cover letter. It talks about purchase requisitions for the payments. The payments were like, were supposed to be over five installments, and now all of a sudden, uh, all of the money is due. Anybody, somebody?
Mr. Mr. Stewart?
Hello, um, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, what I see is a resolution for fifteen thousand dollars, which relate to one of the installments for the payment of that invoice. The invoice, the, the, the tasers, all twenty is for sixty, I think it's sixty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so I believe that the resolution should cover the total of the cost. And then, um, in the resolution, it should, uh, depict how, um, we would be ma- making payments for the installation. So that's what I'm really, um, referring to when I spoke about or made this, um, this memo to this, um, resolution.
Okay, so this resolution is just for one of the, the installment for this year?
It's just for one installment, but the, the resolution should not be for fifteen thousand dollars. It should cover the complete cost of the invoice, the twenty, um, tasers, that is. And then in the resolution, it should say the authorization of each payment, each installation over its, um, over the period of the, the loan.
Okay, so it, it, it's, it states in the cover letter that it, there are five installations.
Yes, so there should be the resolution should be for sixty-nine thousand. And then for each of the, you know, I, I'm repeating here.
But it's, but I'm sorry, but it's already, uh, two payments have already been, been made. Uh, the payment for twenty twenty-two and the payment for twenty twenty-three have already been made, or they have not?
No, no payment have been made on this, um, resolution, on this, um, debt.
Oh, okay. Why? Is it because you didn't? Because you?
I haven't seen a resolution, so I could not pay it.
Okay. And then you, maybe you've never, didn't see the invoice for it either?
I saw the invoice later.
Okay, so trying to figure out how twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three got missed. We're up to twenty twenty-four, so we really owe what, uh, forty-five thousand dollars?
There's no resolution for the purchase of the tasers. There need to be a resolution for the purchase of the tasers. And in that resolution, it should say how the payments will be done and the period of time.
Okay. And so, uh, looking back through the, any resolutions, you were able, weren't able to find any?
No.
Okay. This is an issue. I thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Any other comments, Councilman Mary?
Yes, um, I guess want to get clear on this. Um, so we have the tasers. Do we have the tasers in hand?
Uh, I, I think it's my understanding that there- Uh, I think it's my understanding that they're there. Um, Chief Ryan, can you?
Yes, we have the tasers. It's just like the body worn cameras. Uh, it was a five-year contract. Um, a five-year contract, and they got updated last year, just like we updating the body worn cameras this year. Um, so when I spoke to Dean on Friday, Dean brought all this stuff to my attention. Um, the cam, they had, the tasers were here before I got here, so um when I spoke to Dean, we did the resolution, um, because we thought it was paid last year for fifteen thousand, because over a five-year period, we thought it was fifteen, fifteen, fifteen for each year for the resolution, but Dean's telling me um now, uh, the cost need to be the total cost, so I've been working with him on that on Friday. And um, we're working with um Jordan to see if we can get the resolution right.
Okay, uh, I guess my question is, again, I mean, so the payment started in twenty twenty-two, so we we did whatever we had to do and made whatever contract we needed to make in twenty twenty-one. So why was this not addressed in twenty twenty-one? And they end up giving us the uh the the tasers. Um, and now we're basically behind payment. So have they been reaching out to us? Have they, I mean, so what, they've just been waiting it for four years to get paid?
Um, I know Lieutenant Lieutenant handled my tasers and stuff. So I think uh, I think he reached out to them um after, because we got, like I said, we got up here. And I thought they got paid last year with the fifteen thousand. Um, according to uh the resolution we had here, but Dean said they need the whole total thing, so um so we just find out that it's one price now that of the yearly eight thousands, so um
Chief, can I just correct you there? What I'm saying is that there is no resolution to cover that debt.
Uh huh.
There should be a resolution to put us into that debt. And then in that resolution, it should dictate or tell us how to pay the installments. So we need to do a resolution now.
Okay.
Total of the in place with payments or with the five payments and the years that they will be paid. Right now, Axon said that we owe them fifteen thousand dollars. So as soon as we could get that resolved, then I could move forward in um paying those installments.
Okay, so I I I'll be up there to talk to you, because do we need resolution for fifteen thousand, or do we need one for sixty-nine thousand?
Say it again, we need a resolution for sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so
A resolution, it will say how and when the payments must be done in their installment years.
Okay, so in your email, you got it uh from twenty twenty-two all the way to twenty twenty?
So how about, how about this? We need to update the resolution to include the the correct amount. We can hold hold court on, you know, what that amount is or the, you know, the pavement installments. Uh, but it looks like we're behind. So if we talk to them, and if if we're behind on for four years, I I can't imagine that we're only going to pay fifteen thousand dollars right now. I would imagine that we'll probably have to pay the full amount. Um, so uh let's be in communication with them, put the right number in the resolution.
All right. Got it.
All right. Let me just say, since I'm, I am asking questions, I'm trying to get this cleared out. Because again, I keep on hearing sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand and fifteen thousand. So we paying the full sixty-nine thousand, and we pay this this contract up in full. Um, so I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, because this resolution is saying fifteen thousand dollars, but we're saying the treasurer's saying we need to pay sixty-nine thousand dollars, which is the full contract amount. It covers the five years. So should we just have a resolution to just pay the sixty-nine thousand and be done? And be current on everything? And it's just pay the head, and we'll be paid ahead for twenty twenty-six, so that's what it is.
Okay, got you. Yeah.
All right, okay, nice. All right, thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Councilwoman Jones, Jepa?
Yes, and I, thank you, Council President. I still would kind of do research on a resolution to see what resolution actually brought those tasers into, where's all that noise coming from? Uh, brought the tasers into the city in the beginning from from, it must have been in twenty twenty when these things, you know, uh, somebody decide, uh, well, it was determined that we need tasers or someone was gonna uh give the city tasers, or however, they uh got these tasers that are already in the city. We need to know how they, how they came into the city. It's got to be some resolution somewhere. Just my thoughts. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to a resolution to surplus to public work lawnmowers. And a kill? Any questions related to this resolution? All right, moving on to the final. Oh, no, we have two more. Uh, moving on to a resolution to hire municipal solutions as a grant writer. Questions? All right, we'll circle back to Councilman Baher.
Yeah, I do have some questions on this. Um Okay, I was looking through this contract. I'm like, who negotiated this contract? Because uh, okay, when we last spoke, we were talking about hiring a grant. Now I'm looking at this, and it there's other services in here that they're asking, they may ask to do, and I don't think it's to be, to be slipping things in his contracts at the last minute, I mean, not at the last minute, but slipping things in his contract, and it's supposed to be something that's being pulled together by the council, or it's supposed to be under the council now. But on item number two, it says that the client acknowledges that municipal services has extensive, extensive experience, including in areas including, but not limited to, project management, public safety services, public safety training, and municipal annexation services. I thought we were trying to bring on a grant writer. So now I guess we're not?
What do you?
I mean, item number two on page one of this consulting agreement? I mean, it's a whole list of other things. I thought he's just spoken on grant writing. Now that's all of a sudden, it's just other things, other things that he's going to be doing?
No.
Or this company is going to be doing?
No, this is, this is strictly grant writing. And this one, you're saying just other services that they can have, but if if we were to enter that service, uh, any of those services that require new contract. This is strictly for grant writing.
Okay, then I, then that's need to come out. I mean, I don't understand why that's even in there. Um why is that in this contract that, you know, he offers all these other services, just on grant writing, I just think it should just be grant writing. I don't know why all of that additional was added, because I can see that being in there, and then they're like, oh, okay, we wrote them a letter, and now he can uh he can do that too, or they, the company can do that too. I just see it as another way to throw things in this contract. The contract need to be what the contract is supposed to be for grant writing, because that was the big issue. Um another thing, has attorney went over this?
It is actually going out to the attorney for um legal review.
Okay, because again, um termination, uh term of the agreement is a year. Um, then it automatically renewed, automatically renews at the at at expiration, on anniversary day thereafter? The agree, agreement will automatically renew for one year? I, no, that, I mean, we don't operate like that in the city. You can only do a contract for no more than three years. And then they have it renewed in one year. So then that leads me to the next issue where it says termination for clause. Um, oh, no, oh, number seven. Uh, this agreement may be terminated at any time only by mutual agreement of parties. It should be, and should the client wish to terminate early, the client agrees, it shall issue payment for the total remaining balance of the contract term that was in, that was ended early. You got to be kidding me. So if we are, if we have an automatic renewal, and we accidentally miss one day, and we say, oops, we don't want to, we didn't want to, we didn't want to renew this, it automatically renews. Then that means that he's entitled to a full years of payment if we terminate that contract, and we don't, because we don't want to use it any longer. No, I I we, that this language really definitely needs to be tightened up, because it's sort of, it's been, it seemed like it's benefiting this contract. Um, and then the consultant will be re- uh, uh, under reimbursement of expenses, item number eighteen. The consultant will be reimbursed from time to time for reasonable and necessary expenses incurred by the consultant in connection with providing the services. What reasonable and necessary expenses? That could be anything that he feels is reasonable and necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, definitely.
I agree, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I agree with you. I've seen that in contracts, but I typically have people um uh typically have it clarified that it has to be approved ahead of time. Because something like that would be if we asked him to come, like, let's say, for example, the consultant uh lived in a different state, and we wanted him to come out for a meeting of, you know, of grant writing uh seminar or something like that. So he'll, the grant, him or her will be entitled to like, uh, you know, travel expenses and stuff like that. But I I I completely agree with the, you know, last two comments um about uh the, not necessarily defining it, or in some ways defining it, but making sure that that any of those expenses have prior approval from the council before it is um um taken on by the consultant, uh, and and definitely tightening up that communication on the termination of the contract. Um, I I completely agree.
Okay, and one other thing, another thing is uh item number twenty-eight autonomy. It says, except as otherwise provided in its agreement, the consultant will have full control over working time, methods in decision-making in relation to provisions of the services in accordance with the agreement. The consultant will work autonomously and not at the direction of the client. However, the consultant will be responsible to the reasonable needs and concerns of the client. Huh? Uh, yeah, okay. And we're paying him forty-seven thousand dollars a year, and he's just going to do what he want to do? Yeah, this is really needs to be looked up by the attorney.
It 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 will be looked up by attorney, but it's also, and this is why we have it here, so that we can discuss it, see what we want, because, you know, we don't have to just take a contract that's given to us, is for us to basically do what you're doing, look and see what's good for us, what what we want um from a council, and then move on from there and negotiate a a better contract.
Well, what made him change it from the first contract? Because the first contract had ninety-day notice, and that was it. Now you're talking about a year payout or a a a contract payout? Didn't know when you, when the contract is terminated. I mean, what made him change, make all these changes in you? Because the con, the contract you had before was not like this.
I mean, he actually, I'm not him, so yeah.
I'm just, I mean, he, my thing is, if he came to doing grant writing, and then all of a sudden we got a different contract, I mean, what made him want to change it, change it up to to benefit him? More benefit him more, you know, than the other contract, the other contract, I don't Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't like this. That's what I'm saying. It wasn't like this. And now it's changed up, and all of these changes are in here. Also, the resolution, I think, is also very misleading. Because it says, whereas the city, city of Glanard's administration recognizes the need to consult with a professional grant writer and project managers to secure local blah, blah, blah. And whereas municipal grant service has shown to be the most responsive bidder, this was not put out to bid. This was, this was not put out to bid, and if you're going to put it out there, you need, and you need to put it out there um the way it actually had. This was not put out to bid. Um, this is a sole source contract, which should have went out to bid, because it's almost forty, over forty-seven thousand dollars a year. Um, uh, it says, the city admin, city administration staff has negotiated a contract with municipal grant services. Did the administration go to negotiate this contract? Do we know? Who negotiated this contract? It says the administration did.
So he has submitted a proposal. We are looking it over. Uh, the council clerk can revise the, I I'm I'm going to assume that this is the same language that we undertook uh with the first resolution. Uh, and given that this is um his second proposal, we can revise the language in the uh resolution, which is fine. Um, but the the consultant has a right to, you know, to submit a proposal, and it's our right to accept, you know, what we want and what we don't want. If we can't meet, then we can choose not to go with um uh municipal solutions, and that's fine.
I mean, I'm just asking questions, because I mean, there's stuff in here, there's, that may, I mean, I'm trying to figure out who negotiated this contract, because it says city administration has negotiated the contract. If the city administration did not negotiate this contract, then that should, that wording should not be in this resolution.
Completely agree, but what we're doing right now is is sort of negotiating. So I encourage you to put all your questions out. I think they're really valid. Uh, and then we can communicate back to municipal solutions all of our concerns. Uh, we could, you know, mark up the contract, send it back, uh, and wait for the attorney for his comments as well, and go from there.
Okay, um all right, I'm I'm done.
All right, but I, but I, but please uh submit your, if you can, email your questions to the entire council, so uh other council members can tag on their questions, and then we can
Can I ask a question right quick?
Sure.
Isn't, isn't this being recorded, and don't we have a clerk? She can pick up all the questions I just asked. She'll send them to you. Thank you.
That's fine, that's fine too. All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, thank you, Council President, but I'm reading um the uh under services provided, the second uh uh paragraph, it says, the services will also include any other consulting tasks which the parties may agree on in writing. So it's not like that, you know, they can just jump up and do anything they want without uh, we have to agree with this uh person, this company in writing, whether we want them to do any um any uh other services that they've listed, but they, I guess, I guess this is a way of them saying we are versed in how to do all these other things, you know, and if the the city of Glen Arden uh wanted to uh engage this person to do uh municipal annexation, as they say, uh, we could do that, we would agree on that in writing. So I I don't see any, that that language is not um uh where we're uh uh where the uh company will just say, uh, okay, uh, I'm going to do this, and then I'm going to bill you, so uh, that's the way I see that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. All right, Councilman Fareed, I don't want to leave you out. I saw your hand was up and it went down. Are you good?
I'm good. I'm ready to.
All right. Thank you. And and we're going to circle back on the resolution to authorize which one was it? Council clerk, which one will we circle back on?
It's the right of way, so I said the resolution, and then there's a proposal as well.
Uh, could you share um your screen for the resolution?
All right, let me try.
Councilwoman Jones, did you still have questions on that, or? Oh, you're, you're mute. You're mute, Councilwoman Jones. You're mute, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm looking through my uh documents, and I just, I don't have that resolution. Unless they were talking about that um document that was sent. About the city manager talking, oh, this run, this uh, and oh, no, that was an ordinance prohibiting trucks over ten-ton weight. Uh, that's something else. I don't know why, that's just a um a uh memo. But I I don't have that.
Okay, well, uh, Council clerk, it's fine. We can table this uh to next times to give council members adequate time to look at it, review it, so that we can have a substantive discussion. Uh, should council members have questions or concerns about it, we can discuss it uh in front of the public, and then it could go Uh in front of the public and then it could go um. Uh to a public hearing and into a vote, so we can, unless there are any objections to table it.
Council President, I'm sorry. Did you say this wasn't on the website either?
No, this was, this was not on the website.
It's not on the website either. Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Um I take it that, yeah, well, I still open the floor to any questions from the council on the administrative reports. Councilwoman Fareed.
Thank you, um Council President. I I do have some questions for the city manager as I'm reviewing her report. My first question is, how are you prioritizing projects? In the city? Is it on a first come, first served basis in terms of when resolutions are passed? What what's your criteria?
Uh the criteria is uh those projects that uh have uh resolutions that have been passed. Uh for major capital projects, uh like the uh council chambers and the uh elevator and the uh. Uh nutrition center, uh as well as uh the the money that uh is dedicated to. Uh streets, sidewalks um to get that going. And as you recall, we had uh two sessions with council. Uh one in March and now in in May uh to try to pin down uh what was gonna happen there. Uh and uh in terms of the need to spend the ARPA money. Um and the concern there that uh we need to give council enough time. To be able to reallocate those funds. The push is on uh to address. What we're gonna do in terms of the HOA um uh funding, trying to get the responses. Uh I was able to reach the HOA president for um. Glen Arden towns as a result of the jackhammering incident. I was able to hear from him and then pin him down on. Uh the need to respond if he's going to, uh if they're going to need some funds and they they are. Uh and so that is in in the works. Um hopefully, we just sent, I just sent an email to him again today. Saying your contact person is Mr. Himmler. Uh and um please get in touch with him uh so you can understand the process to to be followed. Uh we still have uh Frost HOA um to to pin down and haven't heard from them. We've heard from Woodmore, uh and of course cottages at Glen Arden is underway. Uh the funding for the Glen Arden Housing Authority. Uh they are in process of finalizing uh their uh contracts. To get contracts for everything that had been, then they had decided on and that had been okayed. Um with working through Mr. Himmler. So the funding that is urgently needed to spend. Um and like the Seventh Street Park, to make sure that um we can finish out with the landscaping. Of that and use up the rest of the, you know, three hundred and forty nine thousand for the equipment. And we also need to to do the um, the difference is the three ninety that's been budgeted, so. We're uh focused on trying to make sure that we give council enough time. Uh no later than July uh to plan out uh you know, what you might wanna do in terms of reallocating funds. Uh for ARPA. Right now, the figure that I have seen that has gone in on the April thirtieth. Deadline for submission of to treasury. Uh we have an annual April thirtieth deadline and the figure that was went into them was only six hundred and some thousand dollars. That we have spent to date, spent or allocated by contract. So when the three hundred and forty nine thousand was allocated by council approval and the contract. Um then uh that helped, but you know, that is a part of that six hundred thousand. Um so little over six hundred thousand. So um tha- that's the criteria, you know, the urgent things that have to be addressed in terms of spending the funds. Um to be able to give you all enough time uh to reallocate, particularly from the Intergenerational Poverty Fund. We still have a trickling in of applications on that and we have um the HOA situation where. At some point, I suspect council will say, um you know, June thirtieth is a deadline and that's the cutoff. And let's um reallocate. Um so um there's, there's also um, you know. Uh coming up on the agenda tonight, the Public Safety Facility in terms of. The funding that the city has received in terms of a commitment from the state. We have four hundred thousand from last year and two hundred fifty. A thousand from this year on bond bill money. And I suspect that that. Discussion this evening will be on uh time to get going to have a um. Uh you know, the drawings done and determine where the location is gonna be so that um. Uh if we want to be considered shovel-ready for any other funding, that that money is available. Uh to us, better available to us if we have a justification that we are ready because we have the uh the drawings done. And so um a lot of what um we're doing is looking at the remaining of the budget uh for this year. The items, there's a few items that are on the capital list that still have to be spent. Uh and like these Kerty cameras in the doors uh replacement um and the AEDs in the in the building here. That needs to be uh placed, um purchased and placed. So we're looking at, you know, between now and June thirtieth, what has to get done in this fiscal year. So that all the monies that council has allocated um uh for this fiscal year get spent, if possible. Um there are just a handful, but still, uh the goal is to meet what council has already authorized. Uh in terms of this fiscal year to have it done by June thirtieth. So that's an example. Um the other thing, of course, that happens on a daily basis is something walks in the door. Um like um the House Appropriations Committee, we we knew that it would be opening. Up again, but of course, it's in the hands of the Republicans. And so um there there was that um. Uh message that came from Glenn Ivy's office, Congressman Ivy's office, that from his staff saying, um you know. You need to think about whether or not you you will apply for a community project. And we don't know exactly when the Republicans will release uh from the House Appropriations Committee the instructions. So we got it last Thursday. Um it was, no, it was last Monday, it was the thirtieth, twenty ninth and the thirtieth, we had to have the that in. By the thirtieth. It was the previous Thursday, last Monday, I worked on it and last Tuesday, it got in. About ten minutes to five um last uh Tuesday, primarily because we were waiting for uh support letters. So that uh took some time. And I do have uh information on the farmers market and the community gardens that I can give you. That I know you're particularly interested in, and that is that I finally got ahold of Jim uh Coleman. Uh he reached out and uh after my trying several times, he's the manager for Palisades in DC and also the. Town Riverdale Park. Um and he said he would be uh. Uh available uh in the coming week to to set up a meeting to uh discuss. How they um, how they have set up theirs and in the interest that uh he or others might have in terms of. Assisting the city with that setup and um. Um you know, one of the things I've discovered in in working with farmers market folks is that they're. They're pretty down-to-earth kind of folks and uh who uh have. Um made commitments uh to the earth and who are very much aware of what their interest is. In terms of helping um or uh their ability to help. Um so that is something that. Uh I, you know, I've contacted three parties, three um farmers market parties and. Uh the ones uh so far from the capital market, never responded. Uh and which was very disappointing. And then Jim Coleman uh responded, just it took like three weeks uh or more. Just to get a response from him the first time, I that he said he would be interested, so um. You know, I think that we will have a meeting set up and the only question on that is whether or not. That is something that um should be in, the the whole committee should be included to meet with him. Um you know, I asked him to come outside to take a look at the the site that that um was tentatively looked at. For the farmers market on Martin Luther King Highway. Uh so that's um, that's pretty much a synopsis in terms of how I, how I make decisions on. On projects um.
So, so thank you for that, um that comprehensive response. I wanna focus in on on the farmers market. Because I hear what you're, how you're prioritizing things, but it, I don't hear. When you need to deprioritize something, how you're communicating that. I definitely feel like for. The farmers market, that resolution was passed last April and we've had very little movement on it. We have been talking about talking to someone about a farmers market for several months. Even um discussing a consultant being needed and I drafted consultant requirements back in January. Last year in the fall, I drafted a timeline of what actions need to be completed. It was stated numerous times. Um and I believe even Councilman Herring sta- stated that setting up the farmers market was not that hard. There were plenty of guides. Available and I even sent you that information from the state on how to set up a farmers market, what grant, um sorry, what, what. Per- permits needed to be obtained, et cetera. We're now in almost, you know, the be- the beginning of May. We're out of time now to really get a farmers market set up when it needs to be set up. Furthermore, those council um. Selections for the steering committee were done months ago, but we have not had any contact with them. I said months ago. That the consultant should be in the meeting with those steering committee members so that we can discuss what is next. So. I appreciate that you have a lot going on, but there. We have to be able to do more than one thing in the city and be able to manage all of the things that are are circling. Particularly as it relates to the farmers market and you're talking about funding and making sure that the budget, budgetary allocations get spent. There's budgetary allocation for the farmers market, but we haven't touched anything regarding that. Citizens are waiting for this, and while I understand you have a lot of other things going on, I also know that time is being spent. On things that are not related to those categories, which seem to be priority. Um in terms of personnel matters, et cetera. And I just wanna know, how are we going to move these things forward that we've been promising the citizens? Uh the farmers market was done and passed while you were city manager, your signature is on that resolution. So I absolutely expect that you will be moving that forward. But in addition to the um farmers market. We also have the community gardens, we have the um Seventh Street Park, which for the life of me, I really can't understand. Why that has taken so long, because as far as I know, we've done everything that we needed to do. We have all the permissions that we needed to get. We've done all the surveys that we needed to do and we're still waiting. When we selected the playground equipment. Finally, several months ago, we said that we should be breaking ground sometime around now, but we still don't have a timeline for that. And I wanna understand, how are you tracking and managing projects that are in this city? We need visibility, because when things come up and we're looking at them in and of themselves and not comparing them to the rest of the portfolio of projects. It's really difficult to make a decision about what needs to advance and what should be put on the back burner and. Consequently, when we put things on the back burner, what does that mean? Who do we need to communicate to? What do we need to communicate? In regards to that, we spent money on a system, monday.com, that I came and I sat with you on to show you how to use the system. You were open to using that system. We did a trial for it and then the city spent money on that system, which is designed to do exactly what I'm talking about. So for every resolution, there should be a project plan and a timeline and ultimately it would give us a roadmap. For the city to see where we are with everything, including committed funds, which seems to be an issue that we're having with knowing. What funds we've committed, how much we need to spend and when we need to pay those bills. So we need to be. Really organizing ourselves around the resources that we have already committed. I'm I'm not sure, but I'm sure you can get the information from. Ms. Ward on what the spend was for money dot monday dot com, because it doesn't make sense for us to have a project management system. That is tracking and providing us with all the information that we need and we're not utilizing it. That is a waste of resources from the, from the city. From the citizens and we really need to be more focused. I know there's a lot of other stuff going around that we're getting ourselves distracted with. But first and foremost, we need to be moving forward the city and the commitments that we're making. And I'm really concerned about our ability to do that. Year after year, we've been going through with different city managers resigning. Or we have an interim city manager or now we have a city manager who's supposed to be executing on things, but we're still. Not moving forward many things that resolutions have been passed for years ago. And again, if there's a r- a rationale for that, if things need to be deprioritized, then we need to have clear. Communication around that and be completely transparent with the citizens on it. Council President, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Are there any other? Comments on the um administrative reports? I do have a follow-up. Um. So at this time, city manager having a week, we don't know what projects, are we using the Monday tool? Are you using the Monday tool?
I haven't probably in uh probably three or four weeks, no.
Okay. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I do have one question for the uh city manager. This is the second time I've seen this on a report. Uh March twenty four, I'm I'm sorry, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, attended a bi-weekly meeting with CPJ, CPJI. Or CPJA, city engineers to review status of city projects. So uh is this a part of the contract? Are we um having to pay additional funds for these uh bi-weekly meetings?
Uh this is additional funds, it is a part of the contract in terms of what they provide to us. But uh you know, the, we have been doing bi-weekly meetings, um but we have gotten. Uh to uh the end of some things, like the Seventh Street Park uh in terms of their work on it. Uh including the uh, the uh. Delineation of the floodplain, uh and their advice on um, on the um. Submission to DEPI on that and the information that went to DEPI. Of course, uh took a while for a response back from DEPI on that. Um. So uh in in terms of, you know, your your question, uh I think that um. Uh the value for for that is to help us. Uh uh stay on track in terms of the projects that they are working on uh with us, like the stormwater. Um survey and they have been uh the contact points with the county on the um. Uh and keep and kept us informed of uh the storm drains in all parts of the city. Where they had on their list of wards one, two and three. Uh a note about storm drains and they have uh submitted uh all of that information. And we go over it, uh the list of what's happening where. Uh if, and I I think we had also sent a copy of that to council on the stormwater management. So um. Uh it has been valu- valuable. Uh they had one person who had been in charge of that, who is no longer with the firm, so. Uh we're stopping those meetings uh for the moment uh until uh we decide whether or not um. Uh you know, whether they decide who's gonna be handling that and if we need to continue that. So for now, probably for the. For the month of uh May and the month of June, we will not have any more meetings.
Okay, uh so um think, I remember um. Councilman Herring submitted a uh water issue behind this, uh well, the houses on um. Fisk Avenue, behind the school, they were having water issues. Did CPJA uh address those issues also?
Uh I think there are two things happening on Ward one. One is the storm uh water uh issues. And I can't recall from Mr. Herring's um. Uh question about the water, whether that was a stormwater issue or it was a WSSC issue in terms of what the work that they had done in the past. Which I understand from Mr. Herring had some flaws in what WSSC had done. Uh and that needed to be revisited, which is why the uh estimate from CPJA. uh, for Ward one actually was a lot higher than, than any of the other wards. Uh, Ward three, we were expecting to have a large number, uh, based on not as much attention, uh, that wards one and two had gotten in previous years, but, um, uh, we were expecting Ward three to have a higher value and it was actually Ward one. Uh, because of the, um, problems with, uh, sidewalks sinking next to, uh, storm drains. And of course, uh, the water problem on Fisk. And I don't recall whether or not that was from, uh, WSSC work or it was a storm drain problem. And I'd have to ask, ask, uh, CBGA about that.
Okay, so that, that, uh, resolution that he submitted concerning stormwater, uh, water issues will have to be revisited. I, I have to pull that resolution again to, uh, look and see exactly what, uh, he had asked to be done, but I thought the engineers were going to, uh, address those issues also. So these bi-weekly meetings, how much does this cost the city?
Hmm, it caught, it varies depending on the length. Usually the meetings only last a half hour. We get through it pretty good.
And billable hours for them is what, one twenty-five an hour or two fifty an hour or?
Uh, you know, one twenty-five an hour, I believe. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. All right. Moving on to topics of discussion, budget presentation, Councilmember Harry.
Yeah, um, I'm really, really, really kind of, uh, miffed with what we got in the way of a budget. We got that budget on April fifteenth and it was not in a format that was really usable for me as a, as a person that's been looking at the budget. Um, it had estimates, had estimate, estimated actuals for twenty twenty-four. It didn't have a twenty twenty, it didn't have the approved twenty twenty-four budget. So the the variances that they were using were based on estimated actuals versus, uh, variances based on approved budget and your proposed budget. And then when we got that, that the revised budget, that had, um, actual, uh, had the approved twenty twenty-four budget in it so that you can compare that, even though variances are off. Um, but also there's positions that's in the other one that we got that weren't in the first one that we got. So did we just, I mean, did we just get the old okey doke where you guys just submitted anything? And then wait for us to complain about it and didn't submit what you really want to submit, just so you can say you met the April fifteenth date? I mean, I just want to know because that, that budget, these budgets are different. And the first budget was not a usual piece of work. I mean, you use piece of, um, uh, information for me, you know, looking at it as a, um, council member who want to compare what was actually approved in twenty twenty-four versus what you're proposing. I mean, what was, what was, what the approved budget was in twenty twenty-four versus what you're bringing forth in twenty twenty-five. So I could see where the numbers are actually going. And your reasoning for why you're doing what you're doing. Because again, some of these numbers that you had in there were just like, I mean, based on a- actual estimated actuals, I've never seen that done before in any budgets that we had. So I'm just trying to figure out what, what in the world happened here. I mean, where we just submitted something just so you can say you met the deadline and then, you know, we get the actual budget once you revise it or what? Um, can anybody explain that to me?
Is, Councilman Harry, is that a direct question to anyone in particular or do you want?
City manager, the mayor and the treasurer. Those are the three people that were involved with it, right?
Yes. Okay, um, I, I can, um, jump in here and Mr. Stewart will, will, uh, supplement. The, um, FY twenty-four estimated actuals uh, were changed in the second edition in, in order to put the, uh, the FY twenty-four budget numbers in. Uh, and so the second iteration was, was being responsive to the, uh, your comment, Mr. Herring about, um, not including the FY twenty-four budget numbers. Uh, and only having the FY twenty-four estimated actuals. Uh, Mr. Stewart, did you want to?
Um, yes, as you said, um, city manager, um, yes, so what happened is we submitted the budget with the actual estimate of what was used for twenty twenty, um, four. Um, it was not in line with how we have done the budget in years past. Um, but after Mr. Harry, um, made his request, um, we decided to go back and include the budget numbers for, um, that were approved for twenty twenty-four. I also sent the supplement information as well, which should have given the, um, breakdown as to, um, how those numbers were, um, achieved.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I, I guess my thing is what would make you think we would not want to see what their approved budget was for twenty twenty-four? When you're giving us the twenty twenty-five budget? I didn't, I don't understand it. I mean, that's what we will be looking at. You know, yes, we need the actuals to see where we are come into actuals compared to, uh, the approved twenty twenty-four budget, but we also need to see exactly what we approved in twenty twenty-four compared to twenty twenty-five to see which way we're going to go. Um, and see if we even in line or if we're over budget or under budget. Um, or if you have to in, include more, I just didn't understand the logic and, and not including the approved twenty twenty-four budget in this budget submission. Um, so, I mean, I, I, yeah, and, and also I still don't understand that, you know, why positions were moved in and out because technically the budget should have stayed the same as it was when, um, you submitted it originally. So, all right. Thanks.
Yes, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to add on to what Councilman Herring is saying and just remind everyone that we have discussed these same or very similar points every single year. We continue to not leverage feedback that has already been received and incorporated, which in turn means we are wasting our time. We're wasting the council's time. We are wasting the city's time in doing this. Now we're not talking about a budget and actual numbers and going through that because we're talking about the format of the budget, which again makes no sense when we're talking about seasoned municipal professionals who, this is not the first time doing a budget, nor is it the first time doing a budget for this particular council. So even if what we are asking for is different than what other councils have requested, you know what we've requested every year. We do this every single year. It only makes sense to look at previous year compared to what is being proposed. That's how we're going to determine whether or not the increases or decreases make sense based upon what we're projecting for the next year. So I just, I mean, you could probably hear it in my voice, but I'm just really at a place where this inefficiency and going around the mulberry bush, it is like it has to stop. We have to do something different so that we can operate more efficiently and move forward and focus our energy on the things that matter. Like Councilman Herring said, it seems like we just got something just to say we met a deadline and now we're going to be spending our time. Many of us work still full-time and now we're going to be spending all of our time for, from now until, you know, trying to get this in before June thirtieth. But we're dealing with stuff where it's like, we got to go through revisions that are really fundamental aspects of what a budget should include so that we can move forward with the process. So I just want to ask the, the administration to really take a, a long look at what your processes are. Make sure they're documented because it makes no sense that we have to keep talking about same standards that we want to implement over and over and over again. That's the point of having standards and having templates. You don't have to recreate the wheel each time we go through this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Uh, Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President. And, um, you know, I just want to back, uh, the treasurer and the city manager on this one. Uh, we already have the FY twenty-four budget in our uh, desk. Everybody was provided that booklet. We all made sure that everyone had the actuals that was passed for FY twenty-four. Now what we wanted to highlight in this budget is what the availabilities were because we know that we're not living in the ARPA funding lush cush anymore. We have to really be clear about how we're spending the city's budget. And with all of the wonderful service projects that we just went through, we wanted to make sure that this budget actually met the needs of the community and the needs of the council that's already passed a lot of legislation that we already know has got to get funded. So we didn't want to have money, just kind of happenstance hanging out there because last year we proposed that and was passed, it would be a hundred thousand for something, but we actually only spent in the year, a total of fifty thousand. So then that shows us that, okay, it helps us put more predictive analysis and estimative analysis towards the FY twenty-five because there's a lot of wonderful projects going forward that may need money and what we don't want is money hanging out slushy in environments where we didn't spend enough. So if we proposed fifty thousand and we only spent two thousand, then now you see there's forty-eight thousand dollars that we may want to look at. A, is it worth putting fifty thousand or do we need to plus this up because we got another project that the council wants to see put on the ground? So what we were trying to do in this budget was to edify the estimate process by showing the actuals, which you already have in your hands. That's a pamphlet, a booklet, forgive me. And then the estimates, uh, for twenty-five relative to what we actually spent. Now that allows you to be uh, circumstantially, uh, exceptional managers of the city's budget. Over.
Mr. President, may I just?
Yes, Councilman Harry.
Let me just say, the only way we're going to be good financial stewards over the ma, over the, over the city's finances is if we know exactly what we're looking at and we're comparing apples to apples. That's not what's happening in this budget and that's what I've been asking for and that's what we've done every year. You know, we looking at what was approved in twenty twenty-four. The twenty twenty-four approved budget should always be on there. Because again, if we're looking at the actuals and actuals say you have a thousand dollars for, you spent a thousand dollars, but the approved budget says you only had five hundred dollars approved, then we need to look at the twenty twenty-five budget and take it up by five hundred if that's what we needed, but we, but we need that information to work from. And in order for us to do that, you know, we can't have all of these numbers floating all over the place. And that's what I'm seeing with this. And I see this as a rather long drawn-out budget process. And is, I mean, yeah, all right, that, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. As it relates to the, um, residual, residual ARPA funding, was that incorporated into the, to the budget, twenty twenty-five budget of things that we need to obligate and spend before it expires, I believe? What's the expiration date?
December is when we have to obligate the funds. Have obligated as in having contracts, not just having council approval. It has to be contracts.
In this December in twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, um, and was that taken into consideration with this budget?
Uh, in, in terms of, uh, some of it, yes, uh, but some of it, uh, you know, we're going to have excess money in HOAs. For example, there's three hundred sixty thousand and we did not, uh, make a recommendation on pulling that money. Uh, we still have a couple of HOAs that are possible, are going to pull through. Um, and, uh, you know, we will present you with the, the ARPA, uh, you know, funding that is not going to be spent. Uh, and make a recommendation, uh, unless council has already had ideas about what, uh, what you want to do. Uh, like with the HOA funding and Mr. Herring had said when, at one point that if they don't spend it by June thirtieth of this year, then it's gone. They don't get to keep, uh, dragging it out.
Thank you. Sharon, are you good on the budget presentation? Are you ready to move on to public safety facility? Mr. Councilman Harry?
I mean, we can go ahead and move. I'm, I'm good with the budget presentation. Public safety facility, this is really, I mean, we really need to move on this. I'm telling you, we're still sitting here with a panel of sky police department. We don't know what, what it's going to look like. We don't know where it's going to be. We haven't put out any RFPs for anything. We're, we're definitely not shovel-ready. And I think that's going to be our downfall. Again, we had a four hundred thousand, we got, we received a four hundred thousand dollar bond bill from the state of Maryland. That money should have been initially been drawn down on just for architectural designs and site plans. And I'm wanting to know, when are we going to get out of RFP requesting, uh, for, to look for architectural design firm to come in and do all of this stuff? Um, so that we can at least have something to look at. I mean, we have absolutely nothing to look at, no concept of what it's going to look like, no con, not even a conceptual drawing that's feasible with what we have. Also, we don't know what type of money we're going to have. You know, we may not, we may not, I mean, again, six million dollars is, I think is a lot of money to put to a police department. Um, but it looks like we're going to have maybe like three point four. I don't know if we're going to get that other two point, whatever million dollars the federal government wants to, I mean, that we put in for the federal government and we need to move like we, like we're moving, we like, we only had the three point four, I believe. And we can't keep on sitting around waiting, waiting, waiting because the four hundred thousand dollar bond bill clock has already started ticking since we got it, I think about a year ago. You know, now the clock is going to start ticking on the one point two million dollars we got. You know, and, and, and you got to keep track of all of this stuff. So I just think, I want to know, when are we going to put out a RFP? Because especially since we're dealing with federal money and state money and county money or whatever other money we got. You know, we got to make sure we follow the process and follow correctly. We can't sit there and use our uh, charter as, as the guide when that might not be required by the state. A lot of times they want the three beds because you are getting, um, getting, um, you know, so much money. So I just want to know where are we at with getting, uh, uh, getting RFP out for this project?
City manager, have a?
Uh, we have right now a, um, a sample copy of what another jurisdiction has done, uh, as an example. Uh, we are also looking at what, uh, is on Emma State. Procurement to see who else is building buildings. Um, but the one we have, uh, that was for, um, C Pleasant City Hall, um, you know, it, uh, has been, uh, copied and in a better readable form and we can start the process for drafting. It's an RFQ though. It's a request for qualifications to, uh, for architects to come forward to, uh, to provide proposals. Uh, and part of that, uh, the way C Pleasant did theirs was, uh, a proposal that included background on the architects, but also, um, the, the, um, process included the architect, uh, review of location, uh, in terms of space. So, um, Mr. Herring, the, the question I would put back to you is, uh, the, the council probably needs to give direction on what it is that you want to see, uh, there, there, the site, um, um, in the grassy knoll, uh, across from the police department has been, uh, designated somewhat, uh, I guess you could say, as a possible site and, uh, the, um, the conceptual drawing that was done was of that site. Um, and I know that there is probably some interest in possibly looking elsewhere, um, that I'm not aware of, uh, for example, I don't know. Uh, but I think, uh, if it is council's, um, direction that we go ahead and prepare, uh, something to solicit, uh, architects to, um, give us proposals, uh, we do have some, uh, ability to use a template that we have to reproduce something like that. Does that help?
Uh, yeah, um, but like, uh, like the last, uh, conceptual site plan that we had that the architects did for us, uh, long, like twenty years ago, I guess it was. The one that we have, that building actually could fit in three different spaces in the city. And that's what they, they designed it because we had a couple of lots that we were looking at. So, I mean, it should, where it goes, as long as the size required, this, uh, uh, size of the spaces, it would fit the building. It really doesn't matter. I mean, you know, whether we picked a lot or not, if it can fit in that space, it can fit in that space. I mean, I guess the infrastructure charges is what's going to, you know, be the other thing, you know? We've had borings over on, borings done over on the field across the street where we staged Glennon Day, but we also did it over there where we also looked at over there between the church and Horace and Dicky's, you know? And also on the corner, that corner lot. Um, so there's a number of lots that it could be put on right on seven oh four. So, I mean, I, that shouldn't hold up the process. I mean, that's something that we get a, a, a architecture, architect in here and you can just let him know. Then he can give us a better idea of what we're doing and what we're looking for and what can fit where and what we can get. You know, and then we got to look at the amount of money we have. You know, what can we get for that amount of money? You know, and, and, and I think we need to start somewhere because right now we have nothing. Nothing at all. We're not shovel-ready. All right, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, but I thought that the, uh, chief did a presentation of a, of a, uh, firm that was available. Or he was interested in, uh, uh, bringing forth to, uh, bring, uh, the architectural designs. And the, uh, different types of, uh, police stations, uh, where are we with that? Because right now I'm where Councilwoman Fareed is, you know. It looks like everything is getting slow walked for some reason. But, um, as far as the site, is it, is, is the administration waiting for the council to pick a site? Or can, uh, like, uh, Councilman, uh, Herring said. Uh, you can bring in an architect and have them look at the three different sites that we have and then we can determine, you know. I, I agree that six million dollars for a police station is a lot too, because we could probably build something comparable, you know. For maybe three or four million, you know, not necessarily six million dollars unless it's going to be, well, I'm sure. To have the state of the art electronic, uh, equipment and what we need, you know, is going to be more of the cost. But, uh, as far as, uh, having a building with, uh, the enough space for the officers to be able to, uh, work. And the chief to be able to, uh, maneuver his, is, run the day to day operations of the police department. Just get an architect. We already have the Felders, if you need them to come in again to get started. Or use the people that the chief has presented to the city. Or is it, like I said, is the administration just sitting here waiting for us to say, okay, we want it over on the grassy knoll? You know, you have the grassy knoll and then you have the corner lot right there across the street from the goal room. Uh, that, that, those are two lots that belong to the city. Once again, Councilman Herring brought up infrastructure. Can you get the water sewage and stuff in there, you know? So all those things need to be looked at, but we're just sitting here waiting for somebody to say, uh, ding, move. Can't happen. We, we can't do it that way. If we're getting, if we're trying to solicit funds from, from different organizations, from government organizations. To do things, then we need to be up on our game, you know? I mean, if I wanted a refrigerator, I'm not going to sit here and wait until somebody walks by and knocks on my door and say, uh, do you need a refrigerator? No, I'm going to go down to Braden scarf to Sears or go online and find somebody that can bring me a refrigerator in here. What I want at the price that I want. So what do we, what, what is it that we're waiting on? Uh, I'd like to hear from Chief Bryant. Chief Bryant, the persons that you had us, had to do the, uh, presentation. Are they still available to, to do, to get the necessary, uh, RFP or the necessary papers together? To, uh, present us with some, uh, drawings for a police station?
Yes, I, uh, well, my last contact with him was on March thirteenth and I forwarded the information, um. To, uh, to the city manager and we had John at the time. Cause we supposed to be going to Pennsylvania, but that got sidetracked. But, um, he was, he was waiting. I did the questionnaires like he asked me to do and then the last thing I heard was we had to bid it out. So, uh, I haven't heard back from him. I just reached out to him and told him I was, uh, waiting to hear back from, uh. From the, from the city manager and the council, because the last thing I heard it had to be bid out and so, and.
What, what has to be bitted out? I'm sorry, sir. What, what, what did they say have to be, has to be bitted out?
Uh, I had redstone ready to start working with them, but I understand, I understood that we had to get some other bids. Had to be bid out to like different architects and stuff, so. Well, like I said, my last communication, uh, he sent me, uh, he said have the city approve my agreement. I haven't heard anything. Can you call me this afternoon? Thank you. And I called him back on the twenty ninth of March. And I talked to him and told him I was still waiting, so I still haven't heard anything either. So, I don't know where we stand on this, but, um, I was ready.
Okay, so who, who's, who's in, in this administration? Who's, uh, responsibility, accountability is it for to get the RFP out to get an architect for this police station? The chief has one firm, but somebody has told him it has to be bitted out. Now, who bid, who sends out the bids for the RFP? If I'm not mistaken, that's the city manager's job.
Uh, Mr. Curtis?
City manager.
Yeah, um, the, uh, suggestion, uh, came from, um, uh, Mr. Herring. That, uh, you know, it's time to, uh, move forward on an RFP, uh, for the design work. Uh, that just, uh, has recently come up and the discussion, uh, with various council members. Has, has been on, uh, uh, location as well as, uh, you know. Uh, whether or not, uh, the, um, the project will include the location. Um, and Mr. Herring has also suggested to me that, uh, that maybe we should do an addition to this building, a two story addition. So, uh, it's not a decision that I can make, uh, or staff can make in terms of the location. And perhaps the thing to do is to, uh, do an RFQ to get, uh, a architect on board. And have them advise the council on where the location is going to be. Now, Mr. Herring has said we should use the monies that we currently have, um, counted on. Which would include the county eight hundred thirty five thousand dollars. Uh, so that, that gets up into the little over three million and not, you know, the two point four million that was requested through the House Appropriations process. Uh, would, uh, you know, be available in, uh, the end of, uh. Their fiscal year starts, uh, in, um, October one of this year. So that would be for the, you know, October one through September thirtieth of, of, uh, twenty twenty five. Um, and the question was asked, that I asked, uh, the, um. The staff is, well, how does it work in terms of federal funds if we got money for construction? Um, but, uh, we were looking at the construction and, and design period. Um, given deep eyes, uh, requirements and stormwater requirements that, that the timeline. As I said, sent to council, uh, about the House Appropriations process. And what we discovered in terms of submission is that, um, CPJA said they would need a year, we would need a year. For just doing, uh, the site work. Um, the design work might take, um, you know, uh, eight or nine months. But the, there'd be one full year to get through the deep fire process for stormwater and, uh, and the groundwork. Um, so, um, I sent you a copy of what went into the House Appropriations process. And, uh, in fact, the, the project would not be finished until twenty twenty seven, based on that timeline.
Madam.
So I think, I think it's a question for council to give direction on, um, what process do you want to follow? I mean, we can initiate and say, we recommend an RFQ, which would be my inclination. Uh, but I'm hearing different voices saying add on to this building or, uh, maybe go to the space next door to the building. Or maybe go on, um, Martin Luther King Highway be, between the church and Horace and Dicky's. So need some direction on what it is you would like to have done.
Council President.
Yeah, uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Council President, um, I understand about the, 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 the House Appropriations Committee. And for the federal government or for, for the, the monies that we are, we already have a million dollars set aside in the budget. To get started. To get started to me means get an architect out here and figure out. Which space is going to be feasible for us to use as a police department? I've heard that the grassy knoll had some, uh, uh, uh. And for water infrastructure problems. We need to know whether that's true or not, whether we can get water and sewage in that, on that space. We need to know whether the space across from the, the goal room, if it has, what, uh, uh, infrastructure issues it has. That space between Horace and Dicky, I'm not sure how big that is if we want to put a police station in, in between there, between Horace and Dicky and the church. How big is that space? I think the other two spaces are, are, are much, much larger. But we need to get somebody out here to get, to get started. It, we, we don't have time to sit around and wait for a federal appropriation because the Democrats and the Republicans are fighting at the house. We have money. We can get started. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilman Herring, um, are you good with the public safety facility?
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta move on. Um, I mean, we do need to make some decisions need to be made. And I mean, every time we talk about it, it's like another month and I have to put it back on the agenda to remember what's what. I think we just need to get somebody on board. Um, and I think we just need to put out the bid for some architectural people. You can't sit there and sell bid, uh, 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 a possible two, three hundred thousand dollar contract. Who knows how much it's going to cost architectural designs and build out and permits and all that other stuff. You can't just sit there and give it to one person. You need, it needs to be bid out. I mean, we're dealing with federal money and probably possible federal money, state money, county money.
So, so next steps, city manager habitant, you, you're going to get two other proposals for the bid?
Okay.
And, uh, Councilwoman Gill?
You kind of beat me to the punch, Council President. I was going to say, what is the next step? And so you just, you just did that. So thank you.
Alright, and, and city manager habitant, once that is out, and once that comes back, communication to update us. And I'll encourage you to, you know, to upload all these projects, the things that have been discussed tonight. Uh, and the project management tool monday dot com so that we can adequately track where we are with different things.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Herring, still, you're still up with the elevator cost review with architect?
Um, I think she already spoke on that. Ms. Felder?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did. And I was going to ask you earlier.
Yeah, we can take, we can skip that.
Alright, uh, Council Chambers and Tricia Center, Council Vice President Ferguson, Jones, Councilwoman Jones, Councilman Herring?
Well, um, from my perspective, uh, as far as the, those issues, uh, Ms. Felder spoke on it. And the thing that, uh, like I said, in the meeting that we had, uh, four weeks ago. There was a, I asked for a report on, uh, asbestos and that has not been done. So we, that is the next step, is to get that report to Ms. Felder concerning asbestos. Uh, and I'll follow up with Ms. Felder tomorrow to, uh, remind her to send the, uh, city. A list of persons that can do this report, because that was supposed to have been done, but. That's good.
Alright. Um, ward representation, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. After our last, I guess it was the regular meeting. Where we, um, heard from citizens around their views on the ward. I was contacted by, um, a few other council members, which amounted to a total of four. Including the person who had reached out to me prior to the regular meeting, wanting to revisit the conversation. So I put it on the agenda. We did not address that part of the charter dur, during our last charter review committee meeting. Um, so I'm bringing that back to the floor for discussion amongst the council. And, yeah, and further speaking with the, um, with the council members who contacted me after. It seems that the will of those council members is, um, adjusted. And they would like to move to an all at large representation.
Councilwoman Gill?
Thank you, Council President. And I was going to actually say that part that Councilwoman Fareed mentioned. That after the last call and a lot of the things that I, um, I heard and received and saw. I am one of the folks that I was fine with one, one, one and four, the way it currently is. But after a few weeks ago, I did reach out to Councilwoman Fareed to say that I am thinking about all at large. Um, one of the things that I am, um, that's pushing me towards that is also, I'm sorry, is. Hearing that, taking the businesses out of the equation, but hearing that there's almost equal representation as far as population for each ward. So if that's the case, then having everybody at large would make sense because then there'll be equal people from whichever ward voting for whomever they would want. So that's one. And the other, um, reason that I saw about all at large. Is I also saw how difficult, in my opinion, it was from just the last election. To have more than one person run for ward represented, ward representation. We had Councilman Herring run for Ward One unopposed. We had Councilman, Councilwoman Fareed run for Ward Three unopposed. So if we were to try to even up the number, if we couldn't even get more people to run for, when it was ward representation. I'm afraid that if we even add more numbers, we won't get what we're trying to get to. So again, I am pushing for at large. That's just my explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Herring?
Um, as I said before, the all at large is, is one again, once again is unfair representation. Um, and the city did award system to give everybody fair representation across the board. Um, I'm going to share my screen right quick.
Um, one second, let me make sure you have, have rights to do that. Uh, you do, you should have.
Alright, um. Let's see. Hold on one second. Alright, so what I did was, I mean, I just think we need to have a little history lesson here. Because again, the whole premise of one person, one vote rule was so that everybody be fairly represented. Um, across their, uh, districts. Um, that was the one thing that kept us as African Americans underrepresented or not represented at all. In the, uh, United States House, Congress and across state houses across this country. Uh, the, the Supreme Court ruled that, you know, one person has, one, the one person, one vote rule. So that everybody be fairly represented across the board, which means they have equal representation. Have an equal representation in whatever form of government that you're in. And equal representation, especially when you have a ward system, you know, gives that, give that group of people more. Give them fair representation when it comes down to, um, your body. Now, everybody says, you know, yes, we may have equal, equal representation in each ward, but remember, I'm in Ward One. Have a very high, pop, high population of Hispanics that don't vote, but they're counted in my population. You know, so that means that if my people don't come out and don't vote, and let me say, uh, don't vote, then, you know. Again, somebody in Ward One is not going to get in. Or again, like last time, when everybody from Ward One, with five people from Ward One were, um, were put into office. And the two pe, and two people from the other wards, wards two and three, and they were born in Ward One and raised in Ward One. So I, again, I don't think it's fair representation. I think we're doing the exact same thing that, that people did to us originally. To keep us underrepresented and, and, um, underrepresented and out of power. Now, the ward system that we had originally was two, two, two for Ward One, two for Ward Two. And one for Ward Three with two at large. Knowing that we had that piece of property that was going to be developed, the whole premise was that once that property was developed, one of the at large would drop into Ward Two. And you had to have two, two, two and one at large to give fair representation. And everybody would have, everybody would have, uh, three representatives and everybody would have to work together to get things done in all the wards. Nobody would have a majority in any, any section of the city. Um, that at large doesn't work. I see that right now because it's quite clear. When I brought an issue to this, this here council about my issue in my ward with commercial vehicles, it was voted down. And no one to this day has brought up a suggestion on how to correct that situation. No one. It was voted down and left as is, you know? So if the representative, so with, I mean, my citizens ask me every day, what are you going to do about commercial parking? I can't, I did something, I tried to do something about commercial parking. It was voted down. Then what are they going to do about it? I don't know. Ask them. They voted it down. So that's why I'm saying ward representation needs to be maintained, need to be kept in place. Um, the Supreme Court has made it quite clear that one vote, one rule under the, um. Um, and, um, that that's the only way that you're going to have equal representation. Um, again, when they changed it the first time to all at large, they did it to try to solidify power amongst a group of people. And all those, all, all, all those people were voted out of office because people saw what they were doing and they wanted their wards back. And that's why they got voted out of office because they wanted the wards back. And again, it was, and it was for political reasons. It was only for political reasons. And now, and then we go back and we go back to wards and you give each person, uh, you do four at large and one ward member per ward. Again, on a suggestion of one person, and you don't do things like that. Again, representation isn't fair across. And you don't do things like that. Again, representation isn't fair across the board. I mean, I mean, it really, it really bothers me when we sit there and do the exact same thing to our own people that they did to us to keep us out of power. And I, I believe that's what's happening here. Um. Um, I think that, um, you know, um, it was mentioned before that, um, we had, um, um, you know, about size, okay? Um, the size of a, of, of, of a city, you know, um, one, one being larger than the other. Well, you know, Wyoming is ten times larger than Maryland. Maryland fits in the state of Wyoming. Maryland has eight delegates in the House of Representatives. Wyoming has one. That's because Wyoming has, only has a population of five hundred and eighteen. Maryland has a population of six point one million people. And in order to make it fair, the United States government gives you two, two senators. Because again, Maryland will always outvote Wyoming. Because they, they can have forever representation because they are a smaller state. And I'm saying the same thing is gonna happen here in these wards. Um, you know, so what I did was I went and I pulled up the census. And this is the census tracts that I pulled up for, um, the city of Glenard, and we are actually in one, two, three, four. We're in about five different census tracts. And so I pulled them up and I broke down the census down by, um, census blocks, and each block tells you how many people live in each census block. So when you look at it, in the twenty twenty census, Ward One has about two thousand seventy-nine people. Ward Two has one thousand eight hundred and sixty-one. But Ward Two is also gonna get another hundred and forty-one homes built in. And Ward Three has two thousand and forty, four hundred and sixty-two. But also this ward also, the census blocks also covered a number of streets that actually Glenard only has half streets, like, um, couple of streets in Glenard, we only have half streets in. Um, so basically, the counts are basically the same across the ward, and I think everybody should be responsible. You know, I mean, everybody should have their two, 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 and I would even say one. If you wanted to vote for the mayor, that wouldn't even be fair if you voted for the mayor. So if you did a two, two, two and vote for the mayor, that would still give you fair representation across the board, and everybody would still have, would have to still work together as a unit instead of a group of, from one ward having control over the rest of the city. And, 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 and again, you can't sit there and say, everybody doesn't come out to vote. I have a lot of people who are not voters, who cannot vote. You know, and, and then that's throughout, and that's not just me, it's throughout the whole city. It's not just in Ward One, I just have more and more award than most boards, I think. Wards one and two have most of them. And, um, so again, I don't agree with this. I think it's just harbor, it's just rehashing and bringing back exactly what they did to us. It's a way to try to solidify power. It's a way to get people, um, not get people that fair representation, because you don't know what I need in Ward One. None of you know what I need in Ward One, because when, when the snow, nobody was out there in Ward One looking at the streets that I know of in my, in my district, in my ward. No one has come to me yet with a, with a solution on, on a commercial parking pro- issue. Y'all voted it down. And came back with nothing. So how, how am I people getting fair representation when they have an issue and no one's addressing it? So ward representation is only fair. I think it's fair for the people. I think it's what was historically done to make sure everybody is represented and have a voice on this council, and somebody's gonna sit there and, and, and advocate for them and their needs. And not somebody who's just gonna ride through every once in a while because they don't live in the ward. Because I could tell you right now, there's a lot of things. I went through a whole list of things in my ward that I mentioned before, and no one knew anything about them. And no one said anything about them. And nobody commented on them. So I just think, again, I think that, that all at large is not fair, is not gonna be fair. And I think the citizens, we need to wake up and see that, um, again, that your representation is gonna be taken from you if they move in that direction. All right, thank you.
Councilman Herring. She can stop sharing, that'd be great. Well, thank you. Any other comments before we take a consensus on this so that things can get moving?
One other thing too, I do wanna say, it really bothers me that I heard four people came out and discussed this. And I, as a council member, did not know anything about this. And whether you reached out individually or not, I know the question was asked, what do you want? And I don't think that's fair either. I think that's kinda underhanded and behind the scenes. And that should have been discussed in open, in an open meeting amongst everybody. Because to sit there and say, four people came to me, that constitutes a meeting. And I don't think that's right at all for all those who weren't a part of that, uh, group. And I think if I, if I'm correct, and Councilwoman Fareed said four, so that means it had to be in the other four, because I know I didn't, I know I didn't, uh, no one, I know I didn't speak to her about it. And I don't know whether Councilman Harrison spoke to her about it or not, but I know I did, you know, so. You know, but then again, that's five, that's four, so I don't know. Yeah, but anyhow, I don't think that was fair either. And it doesn't look good when you do things like this. And, and no matter how they came to you, whether they came to you one at a time or all at a time, but the, the question was asked, because when I asked, well, what was the concern, I was told, well, I don't know. But you did know. And what they would look at that, you, I was told, I don't know. So it was disgusting. I don't know, I haven't tell you, I don't know. Now, one person would have asked, well, what are you, what are you looking at? Why do you wanna address it again? What are you looking at doing? And I don't think that's fair to the other council members that were included in that conversation. And whether you bring it up tonight or not, it still isn't fair because the discussion has been made and the decision has already been put, put down and the decision has been made, so. Um, I'm done. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah, so I just wanna say, it wasn't a meeting. There was one council member who approached me before the, that regular meeting. I didn't say anything because it was one person who wanted to, um, discuss it. And it, that was partially due to the comments that our attorney from the Charter Review Committee made regarding the city of Greenville. The other three council members approached me and I said, let's just talk about it collectively again. And I did not know at the time what their positions were. Subsequently, I did. And so that's why I stated it tonight. I'm a very transparent and honest person. You will not find me being able, you will not be able to find me, uh, getting caught up in mistruths. So I brought it to the council as I felt was appropriate for us, us to discuss together collectively. And for those who felt comfortable to express their opinions and their stances on why they changed their mind, if they changed their mind. So that has been done, is been done out in the open. Anyone who has questions of the council regarding that, or any council member who has questions of other council members regarding their position on it, are welcome to ask them. I only speak on my own behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Um, so I will say that I think that I was the one that actually asked Councilwoman Fareed before, after hearing the comments from the attorney about, um, Green Belt's setup of it being all at large. And I, I do agree, um, that if there's someone that's gonna lead or be in that mayor position, that, that, that position should be at large. Um, and I think that it would be probably a disservice to the entire city if that person was only, for example, only, um, voted on by a hundred people when we have six thousand residents. Um, and so I've always been of the, the position from the jump that I can either go with one, 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 four, or all at large. Um, and listening to, uh, the attorney and hearing, um, um, Ms. Wilson come out the other week, uh, to state her case. I think I have some more questions. Um, considering that we are a two-square-mile, um, city, considering that I had to get out and go out and earn votes across the city uh, from Ward Two to Ward One to Ward Three, so that everyone could see who they were voting on. I think that is actually fair representation. Um, as relates to the commercial parking, uh, I was one of the ones who voted that down, not because I had a vendetta against people in Ward One. But I voted that down because it would not have an equal, uh, effect on all of the wards. Um, and left that, hoping that we would come to a compromise on what we can do to, um, even set up, you know, street sign parking, so things that can make it better in Ward One for commercial vehicles. Um, or moving commercial vehicles or limiting commercial vehicles, but it's coming up with some type of compromise that could be best for the city. And just thinking and reflecting, um, I am, uh, one council member who is willing to change their vote to, or my vote to all at large. Uh, just because of the representation that you will have to earn throughout the entire city. I think that having seven people that anyone in the city can wake up and just call and say, hey, I have these needs. Because again, we can drive through the city, but we don't know all the needs of individual, um, uh, citizens. And it's, and coming upon a citizen to make their, their needs, uh, sorry, make their needs known. Um, so given those reasons, um, and I think the study that council member, um, Councilmember Herring just put up with the twenty-four hundred people that's in Ward Three, and then you have more people that's coming to Ward Three and more people that's coming to Ward Two. I just think that everyone should get out and earn the vote of the entire city. Uh, so that's where I stand on it, and I will move on to the next person's comment. Uh, Councilwoman Fareed, I see your hands up. I don't know if that's old hand or new hand.
It's a new hand, but Councilman Harrison's hand was up before mine.
Of course. Councilman Harrison.
I, I was trying to find out, but, um, I just got a question for, um, you know, those, I guess, because I'm not sure who called in. I know I didn't call in. But I know I heard that attorney advised something about whatever Green Belt was doing. I just wanna know if the judge had taken into consideration with the actual citizens one. Because I heard about what the attorney suggested and what Green Belt doing, but I'll be taking into consideration also what, what our citizens are saying in the community. Because we don't really represent the attorney. But I mean, I just wanted to know if anybody factored in, like, who would, like, be the best fit for, um, our citizens. And I personally just think, like, people will want somebody that's right there up under their nose. And, you know, people that they can reach out to around the globe. This is my thing. And now, I kinda already said where I stand with it, so I ain't wanna really repeat it, but, like, you know what I mean? I just had that question for you.
Yeah, yeah, uh, thank you, Councilman Harrison. Absolutely. Uh, unfortunately, there's not a, a huge sample size. I, I know there's some people that are for it and some people that are against it. Uh, if we had more feedback from citizens, maybe that could, you know, you know, scale the balance. Uh, but I've heard both sides of it. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, I just, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, um, clarify the point around the attorney making comments. She's not suggesting that we take a certain position. What she was advising us on, um, is the relationship between our representation at the council level and our selection of the mayor. What she was, was telling us about, um, Green Belt's process was that they have an all-at-large system, so all of their council members are selected at large. And then they're able to, they select the mayor from amongst them, and that is a, a fair representation process because everyone in the city voted for every single one of those council members. So the mayor, by default, was voted for by the city count, by the city members. So the, what she was advising us on was not to divorce those two points, like how the mayor is selected and how the council members are selected, which is what we actually did. We took the portion of having the mayor selected from amongst the council members, but left out the part around who those council members are actually representing. And, um, you know, she was reinforcing the point that we should really reflect on, on if we were to select a ward representative for that mayor position, could that possibly be disenfranchising two-thirds of the city who would not have voted for that ward member? And in the case of the actual population statistics therefore provided, it could be a lot more than two-thirds of the city that didn't actually get to vote for the person who's representing them as mayor. So that is what the attorney's position was, and just cautioning us on making sure that we were not separating those two components and recognizing that they were together. But if we wanted to have the mayor elected apart from the council members, that would not be a concern then. The, how the representation of the, of the council members were, were shaking out.
Council President, can I respond to Councilman Fareed?
Yeah, yes.
So first, um, thanks, uh, Council President, and thanks, um, you know, Councilwoman Fareed. So the only thing that I, I, I understand what you're saying, I appreciate that. But, um, let's, let's, let's think about culture as well, like, Glenard got a certain culture, we not Greenbelt. So, you know, I mean, so it's like, you know, I think that it's important to keep our culture intact as, as well as elevate. So I just think, like, this be my, or just leaning to the citizens on how they, um, prefer them, you know, to have their representation.
Thank you, Councilman Harrison. All right, uh, well.
Uh, Mr. Mr. President, I just wanna say one more thing, because before y'all, since I've already, since I've already made this decision, um. I, I, well, everything that Councilwoman Fareed said, I hear what she said, but I don't know when it was said by the attorney, because I don't remember all of that. See, and that's one thing that I'm really concerned with, is that this information going out that I don't know anything about. It wasn't shared. Now, now all of that was, and I heard it mentioned in one meeting about Greenbelt and how they do it. But all of the other stuff that Councilwoman Fareed mentioned, I haven't heard. So obviously, there's conversations with the attorney and it's lobbying with the attorney and it's being put out there about Greenbelt. And that's Councilman, Councilman Harrison said, we're not Greenbelt, we're Glenard. We always trying to be something that we're not, when we have citizens in here who worked hard to put the system in place that was gonna fairly represent us. And I put the system in place that's gonna deny people representation as we, as, as, as have been done to us over the years and years and hundreds of years of being in this country. And I think that's all you're doing. Um, Mr. President, no offense, but who are you to tell people that they should, how they should run for office? Who are you to sit there and say, I think you need to run around the whole city to do this? That isn't, that is, that isn't your decision to make, because you had to do it. I had to do it too. But I didn't think it was right. I think that people who live in the, in the community, live in their wards, should be able to pick who they want to represent them. And people in their ward should represent them, so that they can know that they can go to that person. Because again, you mentioned the commercial parking, and you said you didn't vote on it because of this, this and this, but you didn't, as an at-large council member, you never came back with a solution. None of the, that's large council members came back with a solution for that, for that situation. And that's what I'm talking about. So where's the representation there for my seniors over here who's crying about not being able to get out the driveway? Where's the, where's the solution? There's four at large. There's me. I gave, I gave, I gave a, a, a solution. All at large voted it down. None of them came back with a solution. You know, so you saw the problem, but you didn't wanna address it, because I guess it isn't, it is, you know, it's Ward One. I'm not saying you ignored it, but you don't live in Ward One. You don't hear it from every day. You ain't out here cutting your grass and they pulling up to you, Councilman, I can't get out my street. Councilman, I can't get out my driveway. Councilmen, they didn't start, they, they didn't shovel the front of my house. You know, I mean, it, it's, it's things that I know I'm gonna get, uh, as a council member. And it still isn't guaranteed that I'm, as an at-large council member, if I get in there as an at-large council member, I'm still gonna get any services for my people, because again, if it's a majority from another ward like it was before, they probably gonna, they probably gonna dip, vote it down like, like the clear example that just happened. And that, and, and no one is saying anything about what I'm saying here because they know it's true. Ward One was forgotten about when it came to commer- to commercial parking. We still have an issue over here, and nobody brought any solutions, and you're all at large. And I'm not trying to get on nobody, I'm just saying what the, what the situation is. And now you're gonna go back to doing a, a, all at large system because you feel that everybody needs to run because you ran by at large. That isn't a good reason to have people ru- devote on at-large system. And that's for Greenbelt, you know, they do what they do. That's Greenbelt. But you got other Joe Dixons that don't, that have wards. And again, if you are, are adamant about the mayor, and it doesn't matter where the mayor comes from, because the mayor's gonna be a ceremonial position, and I think that's what everybody keeps on forgetting. The mayor has no power. The mayor is gonna be a council member with the title of mayor, but has no power. Unless somebody's vying to be mayor. So again, like I said, I think it, discussions were had, discussions were, things were discussed, comments were made, information was shared, and it wasn't shared with everybody. So I wasn't shared, it wasn't shared with me, it wasn't shared with Councilman Harrison. So that leaves five people, again, what happened last, at the last, with the last council. Four council members just had discussions amongst themselves and decided to do at large. Four council members just had discussions amongst themselves and decided to do at large. And now we go, we're back to that again. All right, all right, thanks.
Well, thank you. So I just, since you uh kind of called me out directly. Um, so I'm just saying, I'm not basing off, well, one, who am I? I'm a uh uh at-large representative um who has an opinion and and the opinion represents uh what I hear from constituents. Um, I've heard people from different wards. I've hea- heard Ms. Wilson speak against it. I've heard other people speak against it. So I'm, I'm not just standing up and saying, oh, you know, you know, forget everybody else. I'm going to just only speak what or say what I want to say. No, I'm not representative of all wards. Um, and so I have not been in a private conversation with the attorney. I I heard all this information that Councilwoman Fareed talked about in the the public meeting that we had all together. Um, so and and I'm not trying to be like Glenn Arden. I think that the with the um, the form of government that we're moving to. I think based on what I hear and and as a citizen, my personal belief, uh, that all at large is the best. It's no personal vendetta. There's nothing to get out to get anybody else. Um, I'm not hitting my um, my uh stance. I've always said that it was either all at large or the one, one, one and four. Uh, based on hearing everything and looking at everything, um, I determined that I think that all at large is the best. And and that's just for me and you know, what I hear and what I'm going to represent. So that's that. Um, Councilman Hairston, I don't know if that's a new hand, but you're in the first order. Is that a new hand, Councilman Hairston?
No, it's not my bad. Let me take it down.
Uh, Ca- Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, um, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to uh point out a few things. What you said is correct. This was a discussion that was had in the public forum. Um, further, in case uh there are people on the call who are not aware, I am actually the chair of the Charter Review Committee. So I think it was absolutely appropriate for those to reach out to me. They reached out to me knowing that we were having a Charter Review Committee meeting to discuss that um ward structure. And we were going to be making the changes and they asked me if it was too late to change the um, what we were proposing. And I said, well, we should just discuss it as a council and let's bring it up at our next work session, which I felt was the most appropriate thing to do. Um, another point is any of the council members are free to talk to any other council members. We all talk to each other outside of the setting of um, public meetings. That is how you end up with resolutions that already have co-sponsors on them. That is how we end up with events that already have people who are uh plan them and have ideas on them. So there is nothing nefarious about council members discussing council business outside of a public hearing. When four council members together are discussing something, that would constitute a meeting. Not separate conversations amongst four council members separate separately and individually. Um, and it is not a crime, it is not a against any requirements or ethics for us, just like it isn't for us to, you know, be in conference with the city manager or be in conference with other administrative officials as they're executing their duties. So I just want to make sure that we're not starting to go down that slippery slope of who can talk to who because that's just not an appropriate thing to do. Further, I think that as we're discussing this, it's important for us not to make assumptions about what a person's rationale is for taking the stance. Again, the attorney was only referencing Green Belt because to give history on this, when we first looked at the forms of government and we wanted to understand how different municipalities were structured, Green Belt came up as one of the municipalities, I believe the only municipality that selects from amongst its council members who the mayor is going to be, as opposed to having the mayor elected separately. We decided to go with that format and because we decided to go with the format, the attorney was reminding us not to forget that there was another component to it. Not that we can just select the council, the mayor from amongst the council member, but understanding the full context. The Green Belt selects the coun- the mayor from amongst the council members because they have all members at large. And in practice, what they have done is they have gone with the council member who has received the highest number of votes to be the mayor. So there's really not a deliberative process that's happening amongst the council members to decide on who the mayor is. Further, I think we keep saying that the mayor's role is just a ceremonial role, but in fact, the responsibilities of the mayor are increased simply by fat, by virtue of the nature of the fact that the mayor is now going to be taking on responsibilities of a council member. Currently, the mayor does not have the ability to put forth legislation or vote. The council members do. That power is now going to be with the mayor. So I would actually argue that the role of the mayor is more significant than it is currently. And to address the point around our culture and what we have had, the city of Glenn Arden has always elected the mayor. But we are deciding that we can take that away from the citizens and do that amongst the council members. So I don't know how we can on one hand argue about fair representation across the wards, but then think it's a fair representation to not allow the citizens to vote for the mayor anymore. That was never a matter of question as we were going through the charter in terms of is it going to help us be a more effective form of government? Whether the mayor is voted for or not, never was an obstacle to the efficiency of our government. So the fact that we were even introducing that, to me, calls into question who and what are we trying to do from a representation perspective? Because that seems to me to be a fundamental right and expectation, just as you think um, uh, uh, it's a fundamental right for ha- for us to have a ward system. I don't know why we would take that power away from the voters. In fact, when we had the public hearing, that initial public hearing, when we were talking about changing the structure of government, whether citizens were misled and had false information, what was very clear and what they were saying was that they wanted the ability to vote for their mayor. So the fact that collectively a consensus was taken and decided that was no longer needed and we can take it away. I'm not really sure how we can compare the two and say that they're, that those are equivalent decisions. Um, or that one is they're both equally representative when they're actually not. And if we want to talk about enfranchisement, taking away people's ability to vote for for a member is disenfranchisement. Going to an at-large um system does not take away anybody's right to vote. Everybody in this, in the city would still have the right to vote for every single elected official that is representing them. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Vice President Ferguson?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to start off by saying that, um, uh, in reference to what Councilman Herring stated concerning the commercial parking, yes, it was, um, voted down, um, and I really thought that it was, it would uh was going to be brought back. Um, however, um, I do know about the parking. I see it. I have complaints as well. I am in Ward one. I do, um, get complaints too. I am, and um, Councilman Herring did run off a list of things that, um, complaints. Um, some of them I knew about and and I would say some of them I don't and there I I did not know. And there are just as many, um, especially as it pertains to the, um, apartments, um. In Ward one, I mean, I have been working with, um, uh, code enforcement, um, uh, green. I mean, I've got four calls today about certain things. Um, so I do, uh, as a at-large, um, council member, I do, um, uh, participate in certain thing, Ward one. Also, when it snowed, I did walk a little bit. I didn't go all the way down Grant and all the way down there. I did receive, uh, three calls, uh, commending, um, you know, that the uh streets have been cleared. So, um, those that were not, I I didn't know, not know. So I was assuming that everything was, um, on the one. But anyway, so to that, um, I would admonish you to bring it back. Uh, as far as the commercial parking, um, because it is terrible, especially even if I, if if I come down, uh, Piedmont to turn either way on on, um, Johnson, it is it's terrible. And so, um, and Fisk and other places. So I would admonish you to bring that legislation back. Um, after, um, the last meeting we had, I had three calls. And, um, from, from, um, one from Ward two, two from, um, one from Ward three and one from, uh, two from Ward one. I mean, two from Ward three, um, and one from Ward one. About, um, the, um, ward, uh, representation. And they weren't at the meeting, but they viewed, they viewed it. And and the Ward three, they were in the older, um, one was on Gary Lane in the older section of Ward one, Ward three. And basically, they had said that, um, they don't understand what the, what the situation is that if if, you know, if we have seven council members or six council members or whatever, just let everybody represent everybody. And so basically, they were saying just at large. And it was asking for me. I said, the reason why I had, um, said Ward one, I mean, one, one and one was because, um, there were people that were saying, you know, okay, so we used to have a a ward represented. But there are just as many people that are represented historically, Glenn Arden has voted for mayor also, yeah, you know. Uh, we have decided not to vote that way, but to vote within the council, the elected council. So, um, things do change, um, with that. Um, so I would say, I mean, just leaving up the resolution that I that I, um, brought forth, um, the today. I mean, I've had, I had three people contact me that I know. I mean, four, um, in Ward two, but that didn't take away from Councilman Hairston. Um, but people contact who they contact. I represented them and brought forth that resolution. Um, I don't, I don't see what the problem is. So my thing is, and and another thing, I, um, did call, um, council, uh, Councilwoman, um, Fareed. I, you know, it was no meeting. I didn't have to participate in the meeting, um, uh. As she said, that she, I guess she had gotten called, so she was just going to bring it back because she knew that she wasn't in a position to to change things herself. And so, um, it wasn't too late. Um, I did, I was the one who said it was too late to go back to the, to the, uh, attorney and just to see what she thought or whatever. And as far as the other, um, the explanations that, um, also, uh, Fareed gave, I do remember, um, which he, the the things he said, they will say it by the, by the attorney. Um, some in 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 some of our council and our, um, chamber meeting at one, at one time. And then there was, um, when, when we had the presentation. But, um, they were, um, those, uh, though they were mentioned and I I I know for sure, um, a lot of that was mentioned at different, different meetings. Um, I don't know whether, you know, you were that there when she started talking in some cases, Mr. uh, Councilman Herring, but she mentioned it, but it wasn't mentioned in the, I mean, altogether. I don't remember necessarily mentioned altogether, but it wa- it was mentioned. So, um, and and so I don't, I don't, um, I can't say that it's something that just made up and just all of a sudden that that was mentioned in our, uh, charter reviews. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilon D L?
Thank you, Council President. Not that it was one of the reasons why, because I already said why. But I do recall the attorney, um, did say it during that meeting, um, about, you know, how interesting would be to choose a mayor from wo- the ward system that we typically have as opposed to not doing it all at large. So I be- I believe the recollection that others have made is what I rec- I recall as well. I also want to say that I, well, like I said before, I received a lot of calls and that's, that's where I'm at with that. Nothing nefarious was done. I believe others already stated that I speak, I can't, Guillaume Delamore personally speak to every single council member on this call one-on-one, or sometimes three of us on a three-way call, you know, just talking. So that's nothing that's going to change. If anything, that's how things should kind of be. Because there are sometimes you don't have time to think about certain things until you are one-on-one with them. That's, that's two. And then the other thing that I want to make sure is let's make sure that we put things in context as far as I am concerned. When it ca- I I personally saw and see the commercial vehicle situation being what it is specifically in Ward one. There are other parts of the city, but specifically in Ward one. When I chose to vote the way I voted, I made it very clear that we need to come up with a compromise. What initially was taking place was we were supposed to come back with a compromise based on the, I'm sorry, come back to discuss when the initial legislation was brought forth. The bu- the legislation was delayed or not, you know, not voted on for one day, um, wh- when it was supposed to initially. And then when it came back, I was under the assumption that we would be discussing possible solutions, but it was all or nothing. Verbatim, it was all or nothing. It was no, this is what it is. This is how the vote is going to have to be and that's it. So there was no time for a discussion because we were being presented with that particular ultimatum. So let's be very clear that it wasn't a, okay, we, you know, we're here and we all came up with a compromise. No, it was the legislation as it was. For me, as I saw, like Councilman Herring in particular, he he, um, tonight said that he, his ward has a lot of Hispanics. I know a lot of people who are Hispanic who have a lot of commercial vehicles. Should they have all of those commercial vehicles? No. But at the same time, I know also that some of them work. So why penalize some people who are working and who need a vehicle while others are taking advantage of it? We tried to explore how that could be, but it was shut down. And let's also be very clear that when all was said and done, we also had started to try to make some suggestion as far as the permit legislation that I believe it was Councilman Herring and Councilwoman Fareed. I don't know whatever happened with that, but in regards to every household will have a certain permit and use and put it on their trucks or vehicles or whatever it was. Some would park it on their driveway, some would not, and it was just no, 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 no. So I just want to be very clear that it takes more than one person to compromise and it shouldn't just be the person that said no or the people that said no, who should just be the ones to come up with something. It should be everyone coming to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. President, one, one more ti- one, one more again since sir, I got it a little two and three times.
Um. All right, we'll close that one too.
Okay, let me just say this. There is a parking ordinance already on the, on the table for parking permit in the city over in in the city in general. But it has been, and it has to be select, streets have to be selected by either the resident or the council. So it's there. It's not, it's not, nothing up in the air. It's already set up. It's already ready to go and it hasn't moved. Um, um, it's things to, I mean, it's in, it's, it's, let's say, it's just say the law's in place. But again, it still comes down to the fact of the matter is that if I said, this is what I wanted and this is going to alleviate the 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 needs and the concerns in my community with my, with the people in my community, we have, why does Ward one have to be a commercial district? Why does Ward one have to have commercial vehicles all over the neighborhood? Because people work, well, yeah, people worked all the time and back in the sixties, people drove cabs all over here. You didn't have, you couldn't have a cab in the city. You couldn't have commercial vehicles in the city because you want to keep your city, you want to keep a certain uh uh aesthetic for your city. But Ward one has to look like it's a commercial, a commercial district because people work. Yeah, I worked, my father worked two or three jobs. A lot of people work. People drove cabs. People did this near the parking outside the city. You know, I'm I'm just saying it again. And that's what I know living over here in Ward one in the history of the city. But again, that's not taken into consideration because everybody else has other feelings about other things and what they they deem is important to them and 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 the people in my ward. Now, again, to sit here and make a decision of this magnitude based on two and three, four, five, six citizens is not good legislative practice. One thing is, first thing you know, when you get elected office, if you don't hear from ten percent of the people, you don't make a major change like that. Saying I heard from three and four people, it does not constitute making a major change like you're getting ready to make. And again, it's been dis- it's already been discussed and it's, and I, and I, and I'm going to tell you straight up, when this came on the agenda, I said they're going to vote for all, they're going out, they're going all at large. I knew it immediately. You can ask anybody I talked to, I said they're going all at large because I knew the discussion was already happening. So you can't sit there and say, you don't, I'm 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 going to tell you right now, I don't care what you say. Ain't nobody going to sit there and tell me that somebody called you and said, I want to just discuss the the ward representation. Okay, bye. You you ain't going to sit there and tell me, well, what are you talking about? You're not going to sit there and tell me that because this is moving too smoothly through. So, I mean, it is what it is. This decision is going to go the way the decision going to go. But I guess, I mean, I guess we got to, you know, that the citizens will have his last say in it. I guess, again, and with this mayor thing, this is another thing. That's another thing with this whole mayor thing. I guess, again, and with this mayor thing, this is another thing, that's another thing with this whole mayor thing, because the mayor originally was supposed to be. A ceremonial position, which is what it still is. The mayor is gonna be on the council. I don't know why they keep on making it, making it seem like the mayor's gonna have all this additional power. The mayor can't veto, the mayor can't do any of that. The mayor gonna have a single vote, like everybody else on the council, and the mayor will run the meetings. That's it. Like the council president does right now. So it isn't like they getting, losing any representation from anybody, because the mayor will still have a vote. Representation would still be there. So like I said, again, the discussion has been done. I knew it coming out the back when I heard disorders on agenda that it was gonna go to all at large. I knew it from the very beginning. And um, and 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 I knew it was coming, because I knew, and like I said, and then when. Discussion from four people, I'm like, okay, that's five people right there. I know, I didn't talk to her. Come from Harris, I didn't talk to her, so okay, that's the five that's gonna vote for it. You know, so it is what it is, but you know, okay, I mean, yeah. All right, I mean, you, like you said, you have a right to 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 make a decision. And you can make that decision based on three and four people, which is not good practice when it comes down to voting on legislation and something of this magnitude. Um, but it is what it is. All right, and I'm done with it. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Uh, so the consensus is to go to all at large. Uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Well. Inside have a say in. None of this. Uh, I did wanna bring up two, two points. Number one, when it comes to the commercial, commercial vehicles. The problem with the commercial vehicles, regardless of whether you put something in place or not, is gonna have, there's gonna be a need for enforcement. And we have a problem with enforcement. From code enforcement, so um. That's gonna be an issue all of itself. Most of those commercial vehicles in Ward One, I'm in Ward One all the time. Because I have a family that lives there and I have to be there. But I'm there. I get calls from people all across the city. I get stopped in the street, I get stopped at Wegmans, and the citizens wanna have questions, they wanna ask questions. From Ward One, from Ward Two and Ward Three, so um. Like I said, the commercial vehicles, they come at night. So you're gonna have an enforcement issue, because code enforcement don't work at night. Um, as far as at large, like I said. Um, it could go either way with me. If we was going with one, one, one and uh four at large, I was fine with that. And I said, also said that we could go at large. I was fine with that. My thing is, people are gonna vote for who they wanna vote for. Okay, regardless of whether I'm at large or as a a uh. Uh, award person, they're they're gonna put, they're gonna vote the way they vote. Look at the votes the last time, citizens. And you see how many people voted for how many people. But they at large, they voted for who they wanted to vote for, regardless of who was on the ballot. There was a lot of people on the ballot at one time. But at large, they voted for, for the citizens voted for who they wanted to vote for. So I don't have any problem with going one, one, one and four, or going at large. So at large is fine with me. Thank you, Council President.
So let's see, yes for at large, Councilwoman Jones. Councilman Herring.
What's the question?
At large.
You not, why you gonna ask me that question?
Uh, you, you still have a, you still have a voice, there's a consensus.
And I mean, it's a works, it's already done. It's a done deal, so you know how I feel.
I put you down as a no.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Um, no, and for the record, I just wanted to say I ain't mind it staying the same like it was or even having war reps. That was my opinion from the jump. So, nah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gill.
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, so the consensus is at large. Uh, Seventh Street Parking, uh, is there a date for groundbreaking, uh, Mr. Simpson?
Uh, not as of yet. I'm waiting for confirmation on the completion of manufacturing of the playground, but that is underway. Uh, I'm hoping I'll get that. As soon as I do, I will make sure that is shared.
Thank you. Councilman Fareed, do you have anything further on this topic?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, just. I I wanna make sure that we're being um really thoughtful about how we open this park. We need a a calendar so that we can communicate to the community broadly who has been waiting for this. And also, we want to invite our um fellow municipal colleagues and uh our state delegates, et cetera. To be able to come to this. So I want to make sure that when we start setting up these dates, we're doing it far enough in advance. That we have the correct invitation list and that we're making sure that this is um. Communicated broadly. So. I believe that's going to entail the council clerk, making sure that we have everybody's information so that we can contact them. That's also gonna um require Mrs. Simpson for you to um get us some dates. You know, whatever the plan is, I don't know, um, you know, how the park building will go. Meaning the the building of the park. Um, so we need to know some dates. I don't know what even key dates are, obviously breaking ground. But you know, there are there other milestones that we should be mindful of in um communicating. So that the rest of the council can be there, the administration, the mayor, et cetera, as well as other elected officials. And obviously, the community.
Mister President.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, I just, so I just wanna uh uh be clear on this. So basically, the biggest delay is getting the equipment. Is the construction of the play equipment for the park, I'm assuming. Uh, Mr. Simpson.
Yes, sir. Uh, we've gotten the approvals. We're waiting as the um playground equipment is being manufactured. Uh, I'm waiting for them to give me an uh outdate. Uh, they're saying about eight weeks. I'm just waiting to get that narrowed down uh specifically.
So they will be doing the install?
Yes, sir.
You said they will be?
Yes, they will be.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, how long? And so the equipment is eight weeks, how long will installation take, did they say?
Um, roughly about a week to ten days, no more than two weeks.
Hmm, okay. So you're looking at estimated time for the completion of the park. What, early July?
I'd anticipate, I'd say sometime mid-July, uh, but I can get that narrowed down to give you a closer timeframe. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Uh, security cameras and doors. Uh, Chief, you wanna spearhead this one?
Yes, um, I have a lieutenant, um, opposite who's my project, um, person for the cameras and stuff. Um, and I'm working with uh, we are meeting about the doors, so that's a work still in progress. Me and DPW on reference to the security doors for the building. Lieutenant Robinson, are you on? Okay, I guess he's not. Well, anyway.
Yes, 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 come on.
All right. Could you update them on the cameras for the building and what you did so far?
Okay, so um. This is the, the, so today I um, I actually got a proposal from Blackshear. Uh, advisors, they're affiliated with Red Speed. And um, I provided um the city manager with a proposal along with the city clerk. I don't know if you guys have a copy of it? Does then, does anybody have a copy of it?
No, I do not.
No one has a copy of it, okay. I'm sorry?
Not at my fingertips, no.
Okay, I provided a copy. Um, I provided a copy. Uh, the price was much, much more than what I thought it was gonna be. Um. It's much more than what I thought it was gonna be. Um, if you guys remember. Uh, a few months ago, well, about six months ago, I gave you another proposal from Vercata. And um, I believe you guys uh shot that down because you thought that was a high price. This price that I received today is actually double than Vercata. So um, I don't know what you guys wanna do.
Yeah, could you just get three proposals? Uh, one of the things that, uh, this is one of my topics, one of the things that is important is the safety. Of the building and the people who work in the building and people who come visit the building. There have been several things that have happened. And our security system is just not adequate to be able to um provide the level of security that is deserved. And needed uh for people coming in and out of the building. Uh, for example, I know city manager habita and I I do believe that the council clerk is still at the office right now. So when they leave, uh, it is ours. Can our security system capture anything that can happen in the parking lot? Um, I think we need to move on this um. Uh, sooner rather than later, because the the current security system is um outdated. So if we just get three bids, um, we understand that we're gonna have to pay, but I I don't think you can. Um, put a number, well, you can put a number on it, but you don't want to put a price on someone's safety. Uh, and that is, that's very important. So. Uh, I think that's the next steps for us, please.
I concur, I concur with you. I have two bids already and I can get a third one by uh probably by next week.
All right, thank you. Councilman Jones.
Uh, thank you, Council President. And then uh Lieutenant Robinson, even if we may have to uh maybe not. Uh, the the places that are. That need uh security cameras like around the goal room and the uh employee entrances. And you know, maybe there's a place that we really don't have to have a camera, but you know, you can look and you can determine from. Your analysis whether, you know, it's needed or not. If it's, if it's needed, then go ahead and and include it. But if you feel like it's not, then don't include it and if that, if you think that'll make the price a little uh better. But like uh Council President said, you cannot put a price on somebody's uh a human body.
Yeah, I agree with, no worries. I agree with you. And like I said, I think the cameras that we so, that I selected or that we selected. In the areas that we selected them to be, they need to be there. I think we might be able to, you know, knock down all some type of services or, you know, services to the services, but we need all the cameras.
Thank you. All right, the last topic of discussion is the ordinance on no truck traffic in Glenard and on Glenard and Parkway. Um, on gross volume weight. Uh, Mr. Simpson, if you can spearhead that one, that'll be great.
Um, so I believe in your package, there's information that was provided regarding the signage. That needs to go along MLK and this is primarily, uh, in a couple of different locations, this is primarily. Uh, so that we can deter uh trucks over ten pounds, over twenty thousand pounds, your semis. Uh, you're gonna have your, of course, our trash trucks. Um, and of course, the buses, school buses that are close to that, but we wanna minimize that on. Our newly paved roads and just the conditions of the roads as well as the bridge um on Glenon Parkway. Uh, and going in that direction. Um, and so once we're able to do that. Um, of course, we will communicate with PD so they can be made aware. We can do the necessary enforcement um to prevent uh trucks over ten tons or twenty thousand pounds. Uh, to to drive up and down Glenard and Parkway.
Okay.
Mister President.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, well, Mr. Simpson, I really appreciate you doing that for that section of Glenard, and I'm sure they have a problem with those trucks, and it's great that you got a solution for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. I appreciate that comment. All right. With that being said, that's the final item on the topics of discussion.
Council President.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry. Uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, um, um. So all, but the next step, Mr. Simpson, for this is just to put the signs in place, because I did see a couple of tractor trailers coming down. Glenard and Parkway from uh the the Woodmore Circle. And I thought that was kind of uh looking, just watching that was uh, I'm I'm trying to figure out how they really navigated that, but they came down, so. So is that the next step is just to put the signs up?
Yes, to order the signs. Uh, I'm I'm imagining, is it for a council approval? I'm not sure. We needed to do any other resolution or steps, uh, but once everything is approved by council. Um, if it hasn't already been, and I'm sorry if I misspeak on that, uh, it's just to order them and then uh and put them in place.
Okay. All right, sir, thank you.
All right. With that. Council expected to go into closed session to discuss personnel. Um, so to the antecode of Maryland State Government Article Section Ten dash five oh eight A.
Uh, I'm sorry, point of order, Council President. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Um, it was included on the agenda to do the goal room, to I asked to speak about the goal room.
Yes, that was before you came, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Okay. This is really quick. I, we had the resolutions for the goal room. We have not sat down and discussed them. I'm sure the goal room coordinator is. Uh, waiting for us to make a decision to to determine whether those uh. But I know you had taken them off the agenda and wanted to uh sit down in a separate meeting to uh address that. Uh, where are we with that?
I think that we were at a good place. Um, I did bump into Councilmember Herring at the municipal center. Um, and I think he's under pressure that we're not at a good place with the um. Um. The the rules as it relates to the waiver. Uh, so as, and I think that's the final item remaining, actually. Uh, I I think it's. As it relates to. Go ahead.
I I I believe that the Golden Coordinator has addressed that. She went to the uh, the Health Department in in Prince George County. And they told her the same thing that I had been conveying, that there is, you have to have a certified caterer. There's no waivers. The law for the state of Maryland says that this is what is required. And that's, and she has all of that in the the new rules that she presented us.
Okay, so eh, then we can schedule a meeting and and move forward if council members have. You know, um disagreements, like we can hash it out then. Uh, if there are any other changes that need to be made, we can make those then and just move forward. Uh. I I echo what you said. I go with uh what Councilmember Fareed has said. We just, we gotta get things done. We can't. We, I don't wanna continue kicking the can down the road. Um, so uh, let's just get it done. So uh, I'll send out um. I ask, I'll ask council, like council, yeah, yeah, council clerk to send out availability for um. I'll look at the schedule, uh, the next week or the week after next.
Thank you, Council President.
All right. So to the annotated code of Maryland, the state uh State Government Article Section Ten dash five oh eight A. The council by majority vote may retire to executive or close session at any time during a meeting. Should the council retire to executive or close session, the chair will announce the reasons and a report be issued at a future meeting, disclose the reasons for such. Uh, for a closed session. Uh, and this session, as this, as mentioned. Uh, will be closing it due to our discussion regarding personnel. Uh, which is the eligible item to close uh an open session for. So with that. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Is there second? Our second, is there any discussion? All right, uh. Councilman Jones. Your vote for closed session?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah.
Caps, Councilwoman, uh, Guillaume?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you, citizens for joining this call. Our next meeting is actually on, um, wow, Wednesday.
May fifteenth.
Thank you, May fifteenth, uh, because Tuesday, May fourteenth is a voting day, and the municipal, municipal center is closed. So we had to move our public hearing from Tuesday to Wednesday at seven o'clock. So, uh, I look forward to seeing you there, and you can voice your opinions on the, um, proposed legislation uh, before we vote on it the following week. Uh, with that being said, this open session is now closed. Thank you.